Staff for all your work. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County. This is statutory writ of certiorari. It's a mouthful. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. First thing on our agenda is adoption of several minutes of several dates. I'll say that all together. So that's October 12th, October 14th, and October 20th, 2021. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, a move for approval of the minutes.
Okay, there's a motion. Is a second? All in favor? Okay, none opposed? It passes. Ms. Ziegler, are there any changes to our agenda for the day?
Yes, there's a request to remove 3612 Central from the consent agenda, so that'll be at the end of the agenda. And that's item F. And items K and S are deferred. And so that's the tax abatement program and 1803 Ashwood.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any... Ask commission first or public first? Are there any questions or is there any items that you feel should be removed? Okay, don't see any. So, all right. With the changes in the agenda, is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
A motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed? And that passes as well. Are there any council members present today? Okay, seeing none.
As noted to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read each case out one by one. If you are in opposition of the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case you want heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. First, we have administrative permits issued for the prior month. Next is 2619 Essex Place. This is new construction of an addition. 3612 Central Avenue has been moved to new business. 110 South 16th Street is new construction of an addition with a setback determination. 821 Setliff Place, new construction of an addition, outbuilding alterations, and a setback determination. 1402 Cedar Lane, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding, Dadoo. And finally, 2610 Sunset Place, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding the applications to meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Thank you, Jenny. I think this is when I can ask if public has any comments on any of these on the consent agenda. If not, we will close that part of the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I move for approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, first motion. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed?
Okay, first up today, we have 945 South Douglas, unit number eight. This is also 943 South Douglas. In 2018, the commission approved an SP for the site at 945 South Douglas. 19 houses are planned for the development. The commission approved specific ridge and eve heights and widths for each unit and recommended approval to the planning commission. The SP was approved, and the applicant is returning to this commission for filed design approval of each unit. You've already approved units 1 through 7, and today we will look at unit 8. The majority of street-facing houses in this development are limited to 1 and 1/2 stories. But to increase variety in the site, 2 units were approved to be a full 2 stories tall, unit number 1 and this unit number 8. The proposed design uses dormers and the tall hip roof, which staff finds creates a partial third floor. The dormers, once situated over the stair, and the tall roof create a form that reads as 2 and 1/2 stories. Staff understands the applicant's argument that many four-square-style homes have this 2 and 1/2-story form. But as the SP limits the structure to 2 stories, perhaps a four-square is not appropriate here. Staff recommends that the roof be lowered by 1 foot and the dormers be removed to create a true 2-story form. The unit was approved at 2 stories with a maximum ridge height of 35 feet and an eve height of 19 feet 8 inches. The proposed height meets those parameters. As you can see here at the very front of the house, the foundation will drop a bit to accommodate the grade, but staff finds that this is a condition of the site. While the height itself may be appropriate, in this instance, it is allowing for an extra half-story not permitted by the SP. Staff recommends reducing the height by 1 foot. The width here was approved at 32 feet. This is what is proposed. However, the second floor includes 5 projecting bays on side elevations, as well as 1 each at the front and back. These measure about 1 and 1/2 feet in depth. While small bays with very similar dimensions are frequently seen on historic houses, they're rarely this many, except in very grand high-style houses. These cantilevers are in addition to maxing out both the proposed width and depth. The houses of this development are very close together, and as such, staff finds that the cantilevers are inappropriate. The design guidelines state that porches should have posts that include bases and capitals. Staff recommends that bases should be added to the porch columns. On the right front corner, there is an open air porch at the second level. The design includes openings that mimic the dimensions of paired windows on both the front and right-side elevations. While this feature is not common in a historic context, staff finds that it could be appropriate as it continues the proportion and rhythm of openings. The proposal includes railings and avoided openings. Staff recommends that these be removed and instead the ledge be raised to create a knee wall. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: Stash will review the final materials; a base shall be added to the porch columns; the cantilevered bays on the second floor shall be removed; the roof dormer shall be removed; the ridge height shall be lowered approximately 1 foot; the railings on the second-level porch shall be replaced with knee walls; and the location of the utility shall be approved. I know the applicant is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me first?
Thank you, Jenny. At the moment, do commissioners have any questions? Okay. Applicant?
Hi, my name is Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for this project. We've got a number of conditions here that I want to talk about. Start with some of the smaller ones first and then move on to some of the bigger issues. So the railings at the... at this porch seems like kind of an odd condition. It's not something that's specifically mentioned in any guidelines as being required. And staff even states that this porch feature could be appropriate as it continues the rhythm of the openings. But obviously adding or raising the bottom of that opening would change that rhythm. And so we're... we would prefer to keep the railings so that those openings would stay sort of as that similar rhythm and aren't really sure why we need to change the style of that guardrail on those openings without a guideline that supports that. As far as the bases on the columns, the quoted section of the guidelines simply states that posts generally include bases and capitals. And while that might be true for wood columns, it is not as true for masonry columns like this. And I went and took a bunch of pictures of four-squares in preparation for this, but I have 27 four-squares that I've found kind of in and around this area. Most of them are on Belmont Boulevard. Of those 27, 10 have masonry columns, and of those 10, only 2 have bases on the columns. So I think this is a situation where, while it might be generally true for wood columns, masonry columns are not the same, and I'm not sure that those bases are necessary. And I can point out specifically, this one here at 2410 Belmont has a very similar style of column, clearly no bases at the bottom of the brick there. And like I said, there's 10. If you want me to go through every single slide, I can. But we're going to cover all of these in a little bit here, too. As far as the cantilevered bays go, I can understand the point that, you know, there are kind of specifics given for widths on this site. A lot of times, we're given, you know, specifics for widths to meet, and sometimes bays are or aren't included in those. But from our perspective, the main thing that we're trying to avoid is sort of a long flat elevation here that, you know, as 2 stories, wouldn't have a lot of... a lot going on on it. And so we're kind of wondering if we can come to some sort of compromise on this situation where we actually have a couple of pictures here that I want to pull up. These 2 here show bays that are shallower than what we proposed, like maybe a foot deep, and that are completely contained underneath the eve of the main house. It helps to sort of reduce the overall appearance of massing while also still breaking up the elevation a little bit. And so I'd wonder if something more like this might be more appropriate on this site where we could still break up some of these longer elevations without adding so much appearance of mass to the building. And yeah, we talked with staff about that a little bit, and they just... they felt that they wanted to hear your opinion on that rather than, you know, making the decision themselves. And so that's what... kind of what we want to hear from you on that. As far as the overall height of the building, staff has made a point to say that this is a 2 and 1/2-story structure and that at 35 feet tall, it's too tall for the site. And I wanted to address that 1-foot comment first. It's kind of very confusing to us. We were given that 35-foot height from average grade by staff specifically at the beginning of this project, and we met that number. This is one of 2 2-story houses in this SP, and so it makes sense that it would be closer to that maximum or at that maximum as suggested. We have not maxed out every single house across this site. We've, you know, we've allowed our roof forms to dictate exactly how tall a house ends up being. But in the same vein, some of these 1.5-story houses have gotten close to this same 35-foot number, and we haven't had any comments from staff about those in the past. The recommendation even states that this roof form and slope are typical for this style of architecture. And, you know, as we can flip through some of the... all of these four-squares that I've found, there's a variety of roof heights, roof slopes, some shorter, some taller. You know, it's clearly, given the style, I think even the height that we have should be considered appropriate for this, you know, for a 2-story house. We are only going to have about 10 feet clear in the attic, and I just measured a house at 1402 Beachwood. We have pictures of that one as well, that has an unfinished attic and is 9 and 1/2 feet clear in the attic. So it's not that far outside of the realm of historic construction of this style of This section also includes a concern that approving a house this tall is like approving something that's more than 2 stories and could create issues with planning. Planning and codes have made it clear over the course of this project that the only way they see a difference between 2 and 2 and 1/2 stories is with finished interior space. And so the overall height doesn't really have anything to do with it in their minds. And so I'm not sure that it's really historic's place to determine, you know, whether that extra foot allows for 2 stories versus 2 and 1/2 stories when the form will largely remain the same. So again, I'm a little confused by just a reduction of 1 foot to the overall height. As far as the dormer is concerned, in these 27 pictured four-squares, there are only 2 that don't have a dormer on the front of the house. So that's 93% of the houses that I went out and took pictures of that had a front-facing dormer. It doesn't really make sense to me that we've been asked to use historic styles on this site but are being told that we can't include a typical feature from one of the most prominent styles of 2-story historic architecture in this area. It's very likely that all of these houses were built as 2-story houses with unfinished attics, just like those pictures of 1402 Beachwood that I showed. Dormers alone are not a significant... are not significant evidence of finished space in historic houses, as they're often simply bringing light and ventilation into attics. They are a significant feature of this style, and I don't see how removal can be our only option here. Staff's concerns about the use of the space are also not really in their purview either. MHCC does not deal with use, only with massing and exterior finishes. And if we are using historic massings as our target here, it seems like a dormer should be appropriate in this roof. If we build the dormers and try to include finished space behind them, that's code's job to tell us we can't do that because we are limited to 2 stories in this development. But if we build them and we don't finish the attic, we leave empty space behind it, no other department is going to be worried about whether this is 2 or 2 and 1/2 stories. They will all consider this 2 stories as built. So I know there's a lot of information here. I'm happy to answer as many questions as you might have or go through the slides a little more slowly if you'd like me to. And I also know that a lot of these don't necessarily seem like huge conditions and wouldn't be that hard to accommodate. That's kind of part of the reason that I... or part of the point that I want to make here. It feels like we have several conditions tacked on here that are just sort of minor design changes and that don't really follow the guidelines or align with historic precedents as you can see from these pictures. I think we've presented enough evidence to support most of these features staying as-is. And if not, I'd like to hear some clarifications from the commission on... about why we should follow those conditions that we were given. Thank you for your time.
Could you just outline the changes that you'd like to see in the recommendation, what you're asking for?
Sure.
Just a bullet point?
I think for... I guess I'll go in order. For condition 2, I don't think we need to add bases to the columns. As I said, masonry columns don't typically have bases. For condition 3, this one, we could get a little more specific, I guess, whether it's that the cantilevers are maybe reduced to a foot in depth and entirely underneath the main eve of the house. I would also be willing to... or I think it would also make sense because we have more space on the one side than the other if... here, I'll go back to the site plan so we can... we have more space on the west side than on the east side of the building. So maybe if we weren't allowed to do cantilevers on the east side, I would be okay with that as that would encroach, you know, much closer to that unit 9. But if they'd be allowed, you know, on the west side of unit 8, where there's a little bit more space between the buildings... So the language of that might... it's a little hard to specify, but... And then 4 and 5, I think probably, well, it should be removed based on those historic precedents that I showed. You know, dormers are very appropriate to the style. 34 versus 35 feet doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to make that change, especially when we were given 35 feet as our target at the beginning of this project. And condition 6, I guess I would see removed as well. I don't see a huge difference between the railing and the knee wall. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this project? If not, close public hearing, and the commissioners will discuss.
I mean, I guess we can decide how we want to go through some of these, but, you know, this is one where there's so many conditions that I feel like we're redesigning it kind of in the commission meeting. So I guess just maybe the goal of giving some guidance on what we think about, you know, the certain conditions and then, you know, what Mr. Wick just presented to us. Yeah, I guess that's maybe if anyone wants to provide their certain opinions on certain ones, but I'm still kind of going through what he said and what we're thinking as far as, you know, staff recommendations and everything.
I guess I'm compelled by some of the arguments for some of the points but not others, so I can share that. And then I think I want to hear from staff on a couple of things, too. But I'll just give my opinions. I'm compelled about the argument for the base on the porch columns of potentially not requiring a base there. I'm not as compelled about the cantilevered bays, but would entertain the idea of a reduction in number of them and depth. I am compelled by the roof dormer. Just given historical context, I'm compelled by allowing that. I guess I want to hear more about the railings and the ridge height. Like, are we... I guess I'm confused. Are we meeting the ridge height in the SP?
I'm sorry, are we what? The ridge height?
Yeah, are we compliant? I mean, is the design provided? It complies with the height?
And I'm going to come up to the podium.
But you are... you're recommending a reduction just kind of based on the overall maxing out in every direction?
Yes, so it is... it's meeting... it was 35 was the maximum allowed. I think it was 32 something and change on the side. Trying to find Martin. Then it has the drop in the front, so it's different depending on where you measure. But we felt like overall, yes, it met the 35. But we were asking for a 1-foot reduction in removing those dormers just to try and pull it down to a true 2-story form. So numbers-wise, yes, it is meeting that 35 feet. That's the short answer to your question.
And Jenny, do you mind... can you speak to the comment about the railings, too?
Sure. So when I... and I think this kind of got sprung on the applicant a little bit maybe because when I first saw this and first sent my initial feedback, I read that as being a knee wall with shingles on it. If you zoom in closer, it actually... one of my colleagues pointed out, I think actually those are metal railings. You do... there are some examples of these sort of open second-story porches. And continuing that sort of rhythm of openings, we felt like that was a feature that was something a little bit different but could be appropriate. With the metal railings in there and with the sort of cantilever, it started to feel almost like a double balcony or it just... with the metal railings, it just wasn't a material that you would typically see in this style of house. And we felt like with the shingled knee wall, it just blended better with the style. So that was where that comment came from.
I'm to him compelled by the examples in the district with masonry columns without a base. That one is not as bothersome as just a wood post without, you know, appropriate detailing as... or historic, at least in relation to historic detailings for what a column might look like. The dormers, I could be compelled by that, but the front corner one, and I'm struggling, I think the argument of having the openings match visually the shape and size of the others makes it less odd architecturally. I mean, it certainly, with the gable on the two sides, it is saying, you know, "Look at me" more so than other elements of the house. And to then have the sill height because of the need for a railing there that's open to jump up, it makes it say "Look at me" even more, and that seems... that's not an architectural or a guideline-related, you know, observation as much as it is. That's what I would be worried about having. Whether a knee wall is a better solution than what's drawn, I have some question in my mind about that, just in terms of the overall style of the house and the aesthetics and it fitting into the character of the neighborhood. And height-wise, I know we oftentimes, especially even with this applicant, we're not relying on manipulations of grade to allow a house to look less tall. And it strikes me that this site, being an SP, was graded, you know, en masse. It's not an individual site where you are manipulating it to further max it out. I'm just wondering if the 30 lowering it 1 foot is an appearance issue from the front of the house and if a site wall or seat wall or something out close to the sidewalk could mitigate that so that it really was less of an issue. And I know we're spending the client's money, but to get what's needed and to cause it to not look as tall as it will from the front with the grades as shown, I wonder if that is an option for worthy of some consideration. Yeah, certainly, we need to speak to that. Those are my comments.
May I ask a question about the height? Because I... we are individually approving, you know, those unit. But however, this is a one comprehensive SP, so 1 through 9, and then the housing unit below, you know, behind it. So I'm curious to, you know, as to all other height. I think it was a bit lower if I, you know, memory is correct. I think applicant also said they never pushed to maximum, you know, ridge height to 35. So especially, you know, front side is much higher, so pushing up 35 seems like looks bigger and taller than necessary. Although it may... it is meeting like average, you know, ridge height as a SP language, but maybe, you know, just a comparison as a, you know, compared to other unit, if this unit is kind of, you know, stands taller than other unit, kind of, you know, looking down the other unit. So I'm kind of curious to know if applicant or staff speak to that effect compared to, you know, already we approved 1 through 7. So compared to those pre-approved unit, how this unit 8 will stand or compare? Do you have any information on that?
I can speak in if Martin wants to add something. He's welcome to do so as well. So yes, we did... when we initially reviewed the SP, we gave specific heights for each of these units, and we also gave specific forms. So unit 1 and 8 were both approved as 2-story forms with a maximum 35-foot ridge height. Some of the 1 and 1/2s also had a maximum 35. I believe that's... where did it go? I believe that's correct. Some of them had a 35. I think the others had maybe a 32. So there is a mix across the site of heights. And some of the... obviously, some of those 1 and 1/2s, you might have more of like a roof peak that's actually hitting that full 35. So it is a mixture across the sites. And we did... Martin and I had a discussion, I think it was with the last unit, with unit 7, about what you're seeing here where the front is dropping a little bit, and I think Commissioner Mosley spoke about that briefly as well. It's an odd site. It already was kind of on a hill. There was a church. They removed that. They had to do a lot of regrading on the site. What they're trying to accomplish is... and maybe Sean, could we step over to the side elevation to see that? So they're trying to flatten out an area to have some flats, a little bit of flat space per unit, and that's going to cause a little bit of drop in grade at the front. And we felt like that was appropriate and made sense and kind of helps... just helps with the overall grading on the site. So we did discuss that with them, and we felt like it was... that that would be appropriate. You're right, it does create a good deal of height in the front. I think some of that is just a condition of the site. But that was the... that was kind of the conversation that we had with them. that we had with them. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Martin?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up. I have, I can pull up all the old drawings quickly and, and actually pull up the heights that we've used. I know the other, the other one-story house was, I think, probably right at that, or sorry, the other two-story house, I think, was right at that 35 feet tall. The one next to it is a one-and-a-half story that was 20, 28 and a half feet tall. The one next to that, I think, I think ended up at, I have it on here. I think that one ended up pretty close to 32 feet, which I think was its maximum. Unit four.
And not to interrupt, but this one as well, I'm sorry, Sean, can you get back to the site plan? This, as you can see, this one starts to step back from the street a little bit. So also, that kind of makes it where, it's a little slopier, if that makes sense. We're trying to meet the setback of the historic house that's just off the screen to the right there. So this one is a little taller, but it is also stepped back from the street further.
Unit four, we had at, that one's, Tudor designed, so it has a much steeper roof. That one's pretty close to 35 feet tall.
Well, thank you. So what I'm trying to understand in, in this context is because we are creating, you know, the community with, you know, a street and then a history context. So this one seems to me, if my memory is, like all other ones, you didn't push the ridge height to that maximum. And of course, grading difference. So if this eight is a little lower compared to the other side, so even though you push, you know, height to 38, may not be stand out too tall. So that's what I'm trying to get. So compare, you know, it's like, this one is already kind of pushing, you know, almost three-story because of the front.
Right, yes.
Is high.
So that, that's correct. This, this one has almost a six-foot-tall foundation at this point. The ones, one through three probably have closer to an 18-inch foundation. So one is actually probably taller at its maximum point than eight at this point because of that change in maximum grade, or in average grade that we've had across the site.
So yeah, that was my concern. Because, you know, each one is a different design, which is, I really appreciate it's so interesting to me. But at the same time, it has to be like a comprehensive, because we don't want to create a like, you know, historic housing depot, right? So it has to kind of match up and have to have rhythm. So for that sense, you know, having pushing that, it's like a really stands out and, you know, or is as a whole, you know, subdivision, does it match up as a comprehensive development? That's what I'm trying to, trying to understand.
Okay.
Comment. So Jenny, number one and number eight were approved to be two-story, two-and-a-half story. I think that's where, my understanding is that, you know, you're pushing the height on that because you're allowed to do that.
Right, that's correct.
So.
These two were approved to be two-story.
Yes.
Sorry?
They were approved at two stories.
Right.
With the 35-foot.
Right, with the 35-foot. So.
And so that's what we, you know, what we hit with this two-story. I mean, we designed sort of a form first, and it, I mean, we do kind of shoot for that maximum height. But this one, it ended up being that that was pretty much right at 35 feet with the way it worked out.
And that was, that was pre-approved or approved because they were more like you're coming into the particular complex, you know, again, the reasoning for the two-story being approved on these two bookends.
Right. If we want to go all the way back to 2018, the conversation we had here with our preliminary SP review, they had actually proposed, I believe, all of these to be one-and-a-half stories. I think they were all one-and-a-half at 35, maybe was, was it? And we wanted to see a little bit of variety. So we said, hey, what if, what if they can have two that are a full two-story, but then some of these one-and-a-half need to come down lower with a maximum height of 32? So we were trying to introduce some variety so we didn't end up with a whole block of all 35-foot, one-and-a-half story houses. So that's how that came into play. We, we offered up, let's, you know, let's allow two of these to be taller, because there are quite a few non-contributing two-story houses in that immediate context. We don't consider nonhistoric houses as context, but in this case, we felt like just to allow some variety on the site that, that it would be worth it to have. A couple two-stories if we could then pull some of the others down a little bit. So that was a compromise that we sort of worked out. And then very specifically assigned heights per unit.
So Jenny, I think this is where I'm a little conflicted, because as you said, you know, this one foot, I don't know if the other commissioners, it's like, does the one foot really make that much difference to the concept?
And I can add to that a little bit, because from our perspective, the maximums aren't a given, right? That maximum really depends on what kind of form that box is. And so we thought that the, it was just a little bit top-heavy, which was the reason for the one foot.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I agree with some previous commissioners on a few of those items, including the, I agree with you, Commissioner Mosley, on the porch railings. I kind of think visually it, it looks better to keep that kind of uniform, the, the window openings as they view from the front. Also, the columns, you know, with the masonry wood column point that Mr. Wick brought up. I think, again, what staff has been trying to do is that the fact that they've maxed out at 35 feet the height, and they've maxed out the width that's allowed under the SP, and then, hey, we're going to add these cantilevered on the top, you know, so it's max-max, let's add some more somehow. So I think that's the thing. And I don't know the solution to that. The dormers, I think, are, have been shown to be prevalent in this context. So the dormers aren't an issue for me. I was swayed by the proposal, by the applicant's presentation on those. But as far as those cantilever elements and being top-heavy, that's, I think, the issue that I'm having with the whole proposal. But I don't have a, a solution for that. I might ask the other architects in that.
My other question is, does the other, do the other houses have cantilevered bays?
The applicant mentioned a few, but there, and he mentioned even a proposed, his proposed solution or a compromise might be under, if they sat completely, these are about one-foot-six, correct?
Yep.
But as he's drawing them, they're about one-foot-six. He's, you know, again, as his recommendation or compromise, if they're, you know, a foot or less, perhaps when they sit under the eve of the roof. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I guess.
We do have some approved bays on a couple.
Okay. On the other, on the other houses. I just can't remember all.
Yes, but maybe not. And then also.
Not, not many as this.
Yeah, staff brought up. No, there's not, there's not quite so many on any other home. So this would be.
Hopefully that'll help.
Yes.
Make some decisions here.
Martin, while you're at the podium, clarification, just, and this may be an issue of rendering. The, the front open porch, or the open porch where the railings are, currently that's shown without trim. You've got a column that, it's a, it's a function of applying, you know, a rendering to, you know, to this, to demonstrate what the material is. Will that be cased as an opening with trim and such?
I think so, yes. We, we would try to make it read a little bit more like the, the window openings next to it in the detailing.
Good. I, I thought that would be the case, but you know what happens when you assume sometime, or when assumptions are made. That was all the clarification that I had.
Sure.
Thanks. I'll, I'll add with, with the casing that's going to appear around those openings, I think it will make them even more window-like. And that the rail, my architectural opinion is that the railing would be less noticeable than a jump in sill height with trim around it. And it's, it's going to, it's going to be just a really prevalent front corner of, of the house that if the opening, openings, shape and size, height to width ratio remains the same, I think is a more, is a better, you know, a better overall outcome, more fitting with the style of the house.
Madam Chairman, based on the conversations I've heard, and jump in if we need to adjust this, but I'd like to make a motion that with respect to 945 South Douglas Avenue, unit number eight, that we approve the project with the following conditions. Number one, as listed in the staff report. Number three, modified to say the cantilevered bays on the second floor shall be reduced to one foot in depth. Number six is, would not be included in this. And then number seven would be included.
Vice Chair, is meeting a motion?
That's a motion.
Yes. Is there a second to the motion? And then we can discuss if you need to.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second.
Could I ask for clarification? So the, the conditions would be the materials, the condition about the cantilevered bays. And then is the roof dormer a condition, or is that a removed condition?
Roof door, overnight.
Okay. And the ridge height will remain. Thank you.
What we'll say is the applicant is applying.
Yeah.
So quick clarification on, on the motion is, so the roof, excuse me, the cantilevered bays referenced in condition number three have, you know, sort of gabled roof interruptions. And the applicant's argument to not have this uninterrupted facade, I think, is compelling. But there was, there was some evidence in, in the district that was shown that really has those bays sort of underneath a consistent roof, and there's not a break in the roofline. Is our intent or guidance, this is going to need to be redrawn and resubmitted to staff, was that the interruption in the roofline is, is acceptable as, as drawn with just smashing it back only a foot? Or is it, do we want a more consistent hat on the building that doesn't have the gable, the gable openings? You know, I, I think in, in an effort to make the house less top-heavy, I think, which is the expressed concern of the staff, the uninterrupted roof line around, even if that, even if in, in the design, as, as the applicant wants to widen out the overhang, just so that, you know, it's not like right up against it, and it looks accidental or like it didn't match, I would, I would certainly be okay with that. And I think it's compelled by the evidence that was shown in the district that that would be acceptable at, at one foot if those were removed.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. Do we need to make an addendum on that, or it's just, it's good? Okay.
Since the vice chair agreed to it, I think that's.
Okay. All right. There is a first and a second, all in favor of the motion. Okay? Any opposed? None. And that motion passes. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you, applicant.
I'll wait a moment to let everybody get settled. I'll try to button my jacket. All right. The next application to be reviewed today under the part one of an SP review is a proposal for infill construction. It's the development of an entire block in the Germantown neighborhood. The project doesn't meet the current base zoning, so the applicant is seeking an SP specific plan rezone. And the commission's procedure is to review that twice. First time for massing and site plan of the project only. And then after the planning commission reviews it, we'll see it again for details and materials. The development, as I said, will be the entire site between Jefferson, Madison Streets, and between Fourth and Fifth Avenues North. It will contain five components, as I've described in the staff recommendation. Two-thirds of the block, the southern portion of the block is in the Jefferson Street development zone of the Germantown overlay. And the remaining northern third is in the east development zone. And the two zones have some overlapping guidelines, and they, but they have different height limits. Component one, in the Jefferson Street zone, has several elements within it, ranging from single-story to four-stories. Along Fourth and Fifth Avenues, the building will extend to the build line with the Jefferson Street facade stepping back behind a patio area that tapers from 22 feet wide to eight feet wide. It will have one-story component that is 25 feet tall to the top of the wall. The plans show a roof deck on top of that. And then the upper-story portions are massing, step back from the Fourth Avenue and Jefferson sides. And then the top of the fourth-story wall element is 69 feet tall. This exceeds the 61 feet maximum permitted by the design guidelines for the Jefferson Street zone. But staff finds the height to be appropriate considering the context of what is adjacent across Fourth, Fifth, and Jefferson Streets. And because the building is only four stories, whereas a five-story building would be permitted, the first-story space, some of that height is driven by the first-story space, which is intended for a grocery store, which has particular needs for ceiling heights and location of services and mechanicals. Staff also finds that the facade is sufficiently articulated, which meets Section E4 of the guidelines. And that also helps to reduce some of the building's height and volume of the building's massing, gusundite. Component, components two and three, the north, east, and west corners of the, of the block are in the east zone, for which the guidelines allow up to two stories and 30 feet tall for a flat-roofed building. The proposed, I'll show, this is the east, and then that's the west. I can alternate back. The proposed building, buildings two and three will be three stories and 45 feet tall. Staff found that this additional height to be appropriate in the context of the surrounding buildings. Proposed components two and three are depicted without recessed entrances, which is a requirement stated in the guidelines. Staff recommends that the storefront configuration and stairwell locations of components two and three be set aside for now, and they can be reviewed when you see this application in part two of the proposal. And I can stop and go back to any of these floor plans, and there are additional drawings coming up too. Just let me know if you have any questions. It is a complex project. Component four, which faces Madison Street, is between components two and three. It is a row of nine townhouses. The townhouses are two-story with a facade height of 31 feet 6 inches, with enclosed stair towers extending to 39 feet. The townhouses also have rooftop pergolas stepped back 12 feet from the front wall. Rooftop decks are permitted in the east zone, but to date pergolas have not been approved by the commission. Staff finds the additional height and pergolas to be appropriate because of the context of the surrounding buildings. The townhouse component meets Sections E3 and E7 of the design guidelines. And lastly, component five in the center is a multi-level parking deck. It is in the interior of the lot. It sits within the commercial and residential forms, which wrap the exterior. And the component five only has frontage on the street where there are driveway and service entrances. And staff finds this component to meet Section E15 of the design guidelines. And I'm just going to flip through floor plans, which you've seen in your elevation, and then some renderings. This would be essentially the view from the, the new Tennessee State Library and Archives building, looking north. And then this would be component two, taken from sort of the, used to be silo, I think, ME squared, at the corner of Fifth and Madison. Section drawing.
Technically, both of them are hot, are taller than what is stated in those, correct?
That's correct.
So, but you're, but both of them, staff has seen, it's due to the context, is that just because we're near, you know, these large other apartment complexes, you know, we're not in the neighborhood per se, we're kind of near these other large buildings, the State Archives, the, you know, that type, that's the context kind of you're pulling from?
That's correct. Jefferson Street is the southern boundary of the Germantown overlay. Directly across Jefferson Street to the south is the Carolan Apartments, which are four and maybe have a five-story element. And to the west, which is the, sort of to the top of this photo, is the Vista, Germantown Vista Apartments, which have five-story components. To the east is Germantown Place Apartments, and those are three and four stories. And then to the north, across Madison Street, are primarily two-story buildings, like the Germantown Cafe and Red Bicycle and, and some other things like that. So yeah, the, the context of the adjacent buildings across the street and even those within the district, and then going north, the immediate context doesn't have strong historic character. The National Register District is like the core of Germantown that has much more historic buildings, but this, even a block in the district, this is still sort of a mixed context.
I do have one more question. So Sean, on terms of historic context, it's just on the east side, there is particularly one, it's the Green Building, I believe that's, used to be a theater?
Yes, the P. Fal Theater.
So is that the, just to have perspective, is that the only context for historic structures?
The only immediate that isn't buffered by a non-contributing building or a vacant lot.
Okay. We might have more questions, but we will, anyone else for the moment?
I, I do have a question of, you know, I want to reserve, maybe reserve the question for staff after the public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Let's hear from the applicant, please.
I'm Jimmy Granberry, CEO of HD Hill Realty, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. This project's taken a long time. I think we've owned this project, this property, in the majority for longer than I've been around and probably longer than a lot, most of us have been in Nashville. But anyway, it's a, it's a great site. We've, over time, cobbled together the entire block, which makes it a much better project because we can, you know, screen the garage and et cetera, and it just is, just a better project. It's a fabulous project. We've worked long and hard with our team. We've got retail, we've got residential, non-short-term rental. We, we've made that commitment to the neighborhood. We've got office, which is sorely needed in this, in this area, so we feel good about the use. We're not just bringing another big mass apartment building rap, which is sort of on either side of us. We've met extensively over the last four years. It started with when we redid the design guidelines in the neighborhood, I think about four years ago. We worked, worked, we were ready to go. The pandemic hit. It kind of put us in a little bit of a, a holding pattern. We're back, we're back up and running. We're working with tenants, we're working with, with our design team, and we, we met on October the 25th with the Neighborhood Committee of the Neighborhood. They have a development committee. That went very well, well-received. It was a Zoom call. I wanted to have the full neighborhood live. We met November the 9th with the, entire neighborhood was invited. I think we had seven or eight that opted on Zoom. We had about 45 in, in attendance. It was overwhelmingly received. We heard, you know, nothing negative other than, you know, the obvious, how are you going to handle traffic? Well, we, you know, we, we're, we're working on that like any project. We, we've got our, our traffic studies submitted to planning as part of our APF application. Our team, David Bailey with Hastings and his team of Mark Zook and Neil Parrish and Working Hard, Kim Hawkins, he's also on our team, Barge Wagner, the old RPM, traffic consultants are, we will drag Bob out of retirement if we need him, but he's, he's been very helpful on our, on our traffic study. But we have a couple of, we don't have a big presentation. I think staff did a wonderful job. We recommend, we, we appreciate their recommendation. We've got a couple of things we want to show you that are some of the objections lately that we've heard after the meetings that we'll touch on, and David and Kim will, will speak to that, then we'll be happy to take any questions from, from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry.
David Bailey, Hastings Architecture, 225 Polk Avenue. Sean, I think I will speak from these renderings, if that's fine with you. Okay, great. So the renderings included in your packet are exactly the renderings that we shared with the neighborhood on the two occasions that Jimmy mentioned. We have been working extremely hard to be responsive to the desires of the neighborhood from the standpoint of the programmatic approach of the project with office, grocery, retail, and residential, which has all been important to them and our discussions with them. And we've included all of this here. We've also worked very hard to be responsive to the guidelines and make all this work together within it and within the context of this, this block and where we sit. As you see in this rendering, the view from Jefferson and Fourth, we are working to step the building back in compliance with the, the guidelines. In fact, we're doing more than requested there, creating various outdoor spaces at grade as well as elevated amenity decks and using that terrace stepping to achieve that. We're also working with the unusual kind of footprint along Jefferson, which is not totally rectilinear. And then from a materiality standpoint, following the guidelines and also responding to the character context of Germantown, and incorporating those materiality and also references to some of the historical aspects, as well as warehouse aspect, aspects of the neighborhood. And in this view from Fifth and Jefferson, you can see, addressing the main lobby entrance to the building from an access, access standpoint to the office levels. We are only proposing four levels here total, the grade level being the retail and grocery, and then three levels of office above. Again, here, stepping back from the corner, creating some great outdoor dining space, easing things there and responding to context, as well as providing the beautiful Germantown brick sidewalks. And then in this view, the three stories at the corner of Madison, which are first level retail and two levels of residential flats above. And so we have continued to scale the proportion of the building back as we move from Jefferson, which is on the right-hand side of the image here, back to Madison. And then as you look down the left-hand side of this image, you can see the townhomes in between the corners of Fifth, where we are, extending over toward the other corner at Fourth. We've also, in an effort to provide more light and air and space to the sidewalk and outdoor space, we've not brought the, the retail footprints here at the Fourth and, or here at Fifth in Madison, and all the way down Madison and at Fourth in Madison. We've not brought them all the way out as far as we could, so we have set the building back a little further, which provides more space for stoops, more space for outdoor dining, and allows us to insert some much-needed on-street parking as well. So all those are kind of critical components of the design, and the site would offer a maximum FAR of a little over 400,000 square feet. We're only proposing 200,000 square feet, so only half of the available area of the site, because we feel this is the correct program and approach in massing and proportions for, for this project. Okay? Anything to add on that? I'll move on to the packet in front of you, so to, to try to explain how this change in height and the change in the, thanks, Sean, setting of the front walls of these elements affects the overall perception. We prepared these, these sections, the first ones you see here. So the first one is representative of the existing kind of by right under the guidelines, what volume that creates. So you can see on, on the right-hand side, the other side of Madison at the Germantown Cafe structure, and across Madison, the east development zone, the lower height, and then the Jefferson zone, the taller portion. So on the next page, and we haven't gone all the way from Madison to Jefferson, just kind of into the office zone here. The next page, you can see here how we're stacking these up, what the heights and sections of these are, and also where the building is placed versus the Build Two line, the minimum Build Two. The third sheet overlays both to compare that. So you can see with the 30-foot height allowable on Madison and the five-foot pitch roof height, compare that to where we are and how the building sets back from Madison. It's in a very, very close process, cloaks, pardon me, close proximity. And then we are using very little of the volume available in the Jefferson area, but yet masking all of that garage space. On the next sheet, you'll see a 3D model rendering of Madison that would assume the by-right approach all the way across there, meaning the east development guidelines, heights and roof slope, would, would have that kind of formation to it. However, what we're doing has more articulation and actually opens up the street further, and the setback that we're providing from the minimum Build Two, to provide more sidewalk space, more outdoor space and stoops, we believe is a very positive contribution to the neighborhood and to, to this block. And then a couple of views, as you can see on the last, next to last page, at Madison, with our proposed approach, with the by-right guidelines approach, and then, turn this one around. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Various views of the corners of Madison and Fourth and Fifth. Last page, the by-right massing on the top left, our proposed massing top right, and then what would happen if you pulled off, I'm out of time, pulled off both levels of residential at the top of the retail, the corners. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else on your team wants to speak?
We're good.
Okay, yeah, all right.
We're attending to questions.
Sure. Yes, thank you, sir. Okay. We'll open public hearing.
My name is Gary Gaston. I reside at 1200 Fifth Avenue North, and I've owned there for 16 years, and I'm also a member of the Development Committee of the Germantown Neighborhood Association. So I just want to start by saying we're not, I'm not here to complain. I think that the neighborhood is extraordinarily supportive of this project, and they've done a wonderful job with everything that was discussed about, the materiality, the uses. There's overwhelming just excitement about this project. I think what you're seeing in some of the concerns that you received and some comments today, and my personal comment, is, is about that, the two-corner sites that were discussed about. So I want to give you a little context. This site, because it fronts on Jefferson and goes into the neighborhood, these guidelines were updated specifically because this was a really big concern for the neighborhood and the community. We didn't want to see what happened again on the net, block next to us, which created a, a canyon and a, a dark area. And so that was explicitly written into these guidelines, which is why you'll see that condition here. So, and with this, this context question, I think that was a deliberate consideration. The context was coming into the neighborhood, how do, how do you transition from a really busy street down to the scale of entering the neighborhood? And the scale of entering the neighborhood is that that two stories on the north side of Madison Street. So that's the context of why this was done only four years ago, and I, I feel like that two stories on this corner would be appropriate here, a pedestrian feeling, a scale, light considerations, shade, just opening into the community. And so I would request that you follow the guidelines for the two-story and honor that aspect of the project. Approve it with that condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Gary, I have a question, if, if you will, before you step away, just so I'm clear on the stated objection or and/or, maybe not objection, but wishing to follow the guidelines. As you turn the corner, is it those that front Madison, or is it that, so you, you've got a scenario where you have retail on the ground floor, it's a plan, and it turns the corner, townhomes occupy Madison. At both corners, it's retail, two stories of flats above each. Is it your view of, of the guidelines and why they're rewritten, that there should be retail and only one level even on the side, fronting the side streets of Fourth and Fifth? Or is it that it's approaching Madison? In other words, is there a middle ground for, for you in, in your view of the project?
I, I believe that the guidelines, I, I haven't looked at the exact measurements of where that east zone goes back to, but it seems like it's applied across the entire frontage of that Fifth and Fourth Avenue portion. Yeah. So that was, there was no further detail gone into that specific question than, you know, getting down to that level.
If I may, Chairman, could I ask a question to Gary? On the same token, about the height, I understand, you know, transition is the reason, you know, better transition to the neighborhood is the reason for the two-story height limit. But, you know, we do have that discussion at the Planning Commission as well. Sometimes story is a bit confusing. So in your discussion, because two-story and high ceiling, it can be 40 foot, but three-story, you know, low ceiling, it would be 35 feet. So, you know, in other words, three stories lower than two-story. So with your discussion, do you have like a height maximum, not only the story, but, you know, certain height?
Well, I believe those guidelines call for two stories and 30 feet to the top of the parapet of a flat roof.
Okay. and only one level even on the side, fronting the side streets of Fourth and Fifth? Or is it that it's approaching Madison? In other words, is there a middle ground for you in your view of the project?
I believe that the guidelines—I haven't looked at the exact measurements of where that east zone goes back to, but it seems like it's applied across the entire frontage of that Fifth and Fourth Avenue portion.
Kind of from the mid-block.
Yeah. So that was—there was no further detail gone into that specific question than, you know, getting down to that level.
If I may, Chairman, could I ask a question to Gary? On the same token, about the height, I understand, you know, transition is the reason, you know, better transition to the neighborhood is the reason for the two-story height limit. But, you know, we do have that discussion at the Planning Commission as well. Sometimes story is a bit confusing. So in your discussion, because two-story and high ceiling, it can be 40 feet. About three-story, you know, low ceiling, it would be 35 feet. So, you know, in other words, three stories lower than two-story. So with your discussion, do you have like a height maximum, not only the story, but, you know, certain height?
Well, I believe those guidelines call for two stories and 30 feet to the top of the parapet of a flat roof structure. So that would be the, you know, two stories, 30-foot height.
So—
I believe these levels are probably—maybe because it's concrete construction, it's 10 feet, just a little bit over 10 feet. But there's a 16-foot ground-level retail space. So there would be some flexibility with, I guess, a higher floor height on the top. But because it's a three-story building, it goes up to a little closer to the 40-feet height.
So the—as far as corner, you're understanding in the guideline is 30 feet in the corner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? That was rare. And I think it's because you're, you know, have some background there, Mr. Gaston with Civic Design Center.
Hello, Teresa Blackburn, homeowner at 1204 Fifth Avenue North. I support what Gary says. We are only—we're very much are happy and pleased and joyful that HG Hill is building this project in our neighborhood. We have no problem with that. But we are asking to—that they—at the corners of Madison and Fourth and Madison and Fifth, that they go by the guidelines that were set in our neighborhood to prevent overly tall buildings from the perspective of deeper into Fourth—Fifth Avenue North, when you come from homeownership and small two-story buildings that are 30 feet at the max—I think they're really 27 maybe—but when you go down Fifth South, that you are not confronted with an edifice like was slipped through a couple of times in our neighborhood in the past. So the guidelines were set in 2017 to prevent builders from going over the height limits that were decided on. And we're trying to just ask that the HG Hill people—tell them that we're so appreciative of what they're doing, but that we would like for them to respect this one guideline request that the neighborhood—that some of the neighborhood has that know about it in context with this building. And that's the—that you approve the SP, we are fine with that, with the stipulation that we keep those corners at the 30 for flat roof or 35 for a pitched roof. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Most of—some of you are familiar friends from a long time. I'm Burdell Campbell. I live at 1217 Fifth Avenue North in an 1870s restored house, and I've been in Germantown 41 years. And the uphill battle we fight in sort of maintaining Germantown is ever—it's like the big fight at the beginning. And we applaud this project and hearing about it was a great joy. We would like to plead for maintaining adherence to the guidelines. They were thoughtfully put there for the purposes of protecting sometimes when we need protection. And that one modification is what we're asking for. And I'm just being as brief as I can. You have my letter, so I've already written to you, and I just—we just ask for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anyone else?
My name is Ellen Marazek. I'm 1313 Fifth Avenue North. I would just urge you to consider the corner—those exact corners in that you have. At Fourth, you have Henrietta Red. It's a retail corner. It's two stories. There's a little Italian deli, and it's new. It hasn't opened yet in restaurants. That's two stories, one story. The other corner is two stories. Germantown Cafe is two stories. The Hair Salon is two stories. Those corners are two stories, other than the Vista. So rather than looking at the Archive and Carolin, because those are really out of the specific corners, thinking of a pedestrian on those corners and how nice it feels to be at the two stories. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Janice Seals. I live at 1216 Fifth Avenue North. I, like Burdell, am a long-term resident of Germantown. We've watched it develop. We're excited about the HG Hill project. We think it's a good thing for the neighborhood, but I share the concerns about the height on Madison. And I share it for two reasons. One is, I think lowering it one story better fits with the context of that corner at Madison. The other is, I am very much concerned about setting a precedent about ignoring the guidelines because I know the minute that we do that, every developer that comes after will bring that up, and that will be evidence to ignore the next guideline. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else, I will close public hearing. Okay? So closed discussion or questions to staff?
I just want to comment that on the guidelines, let's just be really clear where we're at with that so we can be very verbal with that. So the section C height says that traditionally the residential portions of Germantown had one- and two-story homes next to each other, therefore, one, one-point, one-and-a-half and two-story homes are appropriate. New construction should not exceed two stories, 35-foot for a pitched roof and 30-foot for a flat roof, from grade to ridge or top of parapet wall as measured at the front corners. Special features of limited height such as towers or turrets may be acceptable as long as they are kept to a minimum. I just want to say that I do realize that Historic Germantown has worked very hard on their overlay, and because of that, we do hear you on the fact that they were revised because of other developments that have happened, not so much under the radar, but that it just happens. So we do understand that and just want you to know that we are hearing your voice on
And also want to thank the team of HG Hill. It is a very hefty project, but you have made some good presentations, and we do thank you for your hours and your years into work into this particular project.
I'm going to go ahead and jump in. I spent a lot of time reviewing this project. It's a very complex, large project. And first of all, I just want to commend staff and the design team for putting this together in a way that was so clear to understand. It's an amazing project, and it's great to hear that there's so much support from the neighborhood. And I really like that with a development that's taking over an entire block, that it hasn't been maxed out, that the square footage could have been, it sounds like, double if it were maxed out, and that—and we've seen that happen on other blocks with just super repetitive facades. And I think it's great to see the different components, how the components step back, how they differentiate from each other. And I think that differentiation is great as you move throughout the components, but they complement each other. I know the biggest—it sounds like from the public, the biggest concern are these two corners. That's seems like the thing we're hearing the most pushback on. From an architectural standpoint, I think—I mean, you know, what's across Fifth? To me, yeah, across—if I'm like, yeah, across Fifth, I mean, I feel like we already have a large scale across Fifth that we're dealing with. So it doesn't concern me on that side. And really—the lack of context on most of Fourth. To me, the height from an architectural standpoint helps transition from the larger block on the front down to the townhomes instead of having like an abrupt drop in that proportion. I don't—I'd like to hear from other commissioners. I mean, I'm, you know, hearing what the public's saying, but I'm also very compelled by the project as presented, just given—the context it is across Fourth and Fifth and, you know, we're at the edge of the—edge of the overlay. And anyway, those are my initial thoughts.
Madam Chair, could I ask the Development Team a little bit more clarification about the last page of the presentation? It says "by rights and proposed." If you would specifically talk about the height difference of this illustration, "by rights and proposed," so how much are the height difference of this, your illustration of the first box of "by rights and your proposed"? What's a kind of height difference that we are talking about?
Yes, ma'am. So, top left, "by right," the Eevee line that you see there is depicted at 30 feet with a five-foot extension of a pitched roof. So you have a total 35-foot height, and that's allowed under the guidelines. In the proposed—and in "by right," that's built out at the minimum Build Two. In the proposed, we have stepped that back further away from the minimum Build Two, added more sidewalk space. The dimensions of the total height at Fifth and Madison is slightly taller because grade changes as you go down Madison from Fourth—from Fifth to Fourth. You gain about four feet, six feet, four feet of height, sorry, as you go down Madison toward Fourth. So we are 38 feet at—sorry, Mark.
We're from around 41, so we're 37.
Okay. So we are—the total height at Parapet at the corner of Fourth and Madison, because you gain the extra feet, is 41 feet. And the total height at Fifth and Madison is 37 feet. So we're two feet above that 35-foot max, and we're set back further than minimum Build So we give extra light and air space of the sidewalk to the street by doing that. So we've tried to take all that into account.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It helps. So the "by rights" is, I think, you know, built to the story, but "proposed" is set back and try to give a little bit more air space and sidewalks and so forth.
Yes.
Okay, that helps. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So I am kind of, you know, with Commissioner Fitz, I am very respectful of a Germantown guideline, and I do appreciate that, you know, because transition to neighborhood is really important. And, you know, transition and comprehensive design is very important. But at the same time, I recognize this is the southern edge of the Germantown corner, literally south and east edge. So that does not really spill into neighborhood. And I think overall, this design is really comprehensive and really well-thought-out. And I think, you know, neighborhood is really embraced in the overall concept. I think what a sticking point is a corner, you know, the height of the corner, so better transition. So to me, because it's as a product, it's really going into great direction. So I hate at this juncture, we kind of flat-out deny it because of like, you know, two feet to five feet, you know, height difference. I think as we move forward from this body to Planning Commission and then Council, because at Planning Commission, we do have public hearing, and then at the Council, we do have public hearing. So—and this project will not done until Council approves at the third reading. So between now and then, we do have lots of, you know, public engagement opportunity. And I think with this committed design team and development team, they can come up with a compromise, maybe push corner or angle corner. I don't know whatever, but, you know, they do have really talented people. So I think we can accomplish good for the community and good for the, you know, in line with as close as guideline. So I am kind of, you know, inclined to accept staff recommendation at this juncture because as an overall product, it meets our guideline except to corner. So if we were to kind of add a condition, I would like to add, you know, Development Team and neighborhood continue work and come up with a compromise to better transition. That would be kind of my leaning, my thinking as of right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Any others?
Yep. I'm going to maybe try to crystallize what some of the objection is that we've seen in public comment and what's been presented. Not necessarily speaking in favor one way or the other, but if we're talking specifically about the corners and the issue of height in the exhibit that was provided to us, that really is a matter of height. And I think the argument of a story is a story. And here in the presentation, and I think probably in the economics that the design team and that the developer has put together, there are 16 flats that are shown in the application. And if I'm understanding the objection and the interpretation of the guidelines correctly, certainly by those who have objection to it, eight would be the limitation that's being proposed. So it's a reduction by half. Just so we're clear on what I think is being objected to or asked to follow the guidelines. And I just don't want that to get muddied or—just want that to be crystal clear in part of our discussion here and part of our deliberation. Again, not a—not favoring one way or the other, but I think that that's what's at issue here. And if we equivocate—if there's an equivocation between height and stories, just make sure we know what we're doing there.
I'm also inclined to agree with Commissioner Fitz just on the architectural of the entire proposal. And, you know, it does step down, but, you know, also with Commissioner Johnson's kind of thinking on that, you know, because then I also go back with—the neighborhood specifically gave these heights and limitations for us. And so that is something that, you know, it's hard to just give kind of a carpe l'ange, oh, well, that, you know, well, for this—but, you know, kind of why. But for me, the why of why I might be okay to it is just the fact that I think it does work well in this location and on this site. So I think there can be more discussion with the public. And again, I think it's a very in-tune development team here to the city and what is wanted. But I am kind of going back and forth with it, with the set limits verse, you know, allowing it for this. But I do think I fall more, you know, agreeing with Commissioner Fitz on just the overall look. I think is less abrupt, and it does bring it down towards the neighborhood, and then across the street, then it's shorter still, and then you move into the neighborhood. I do agree with that viewpoint on that, and therefore, you know, kind of am inclined to support the staff recommendation at this point in this process.
I think commissioners are making some really good comments because we are in our early stages. It will go to planning. There will be discussion. There will be— There will be public hearing. We, we've been, we've been through this road before. It is a hefty project and we know that there's going to be continued conversations. So this is not our, this is not the stop of, of this project. So I think it's, our, our purview is that we determine to the best of our ability under the guidelines is that the, the scale enassing of this project is appropriate for this particular location. So I think we all have really good comments. Again, the HG Hill team has a very in tuned, as I love that word, Caitlin, because they are very wise and have a lot of experience in this, in this county. So as we are, I mean, I know we have preservation in our minds. And again, we hear about Germantown and how we want to preserve that uniqueness there. It is different. Every neighborhood is different. And I believe, again, looking at the plans is that the team has been very sensitive to these items and again, more conversation. So is there a motion or questions or comment?
One item to add, given, or one suggestion perhaps to make for consideration, given the nature of the discussion to this point. The, the units, the townhome units along Madison Street are clearly read as two-story. And I'm curious if there's a middle ground here in, in my discussion about eight versus 16. Is, is that looking at the way the corridors are laid out, again, it's not our job to play architect, but this is regarding massing, is there dropping, dropping a single unit at the corners and perhaps make, you know, if, if a two-bedroom on each of the, the levels of, of the, is, is needed, that, that there, there'd be a consideration to drop, drop the corner unit so that the entirety of the facade along Madison Street would read as two-story. It provides them, you know, I'm spending the client, the developer's money, it provides a, a deck opportunity for a, a unit that could be leased more and, you know, they can figure all that piece of it out. There's certainly, this wouldn't be the only unit on the, you know, on the, in the development to have some rooftop drainage issues that they've got to work out and feel teams completely capable of that. But I would, given the direction that to set it in, I would, I would ask that the commission maybe consider that as a possibility.
You know, this is an extremely difficult project of, as a commission for us to, to go with. We have one of the foremost developers in town, one of the foremost design teams in town, and one of the foremost neighborhood groups as well. And I have tremendous respect for all those groups. I, I don't think we'd be having much of this conversation if it wasn't for the track record and the reputation of the HG Hill group and the projects they've done, Hastings Architecture and the quality of the projects they've done and the sensitivity of this project to this site. By the same token, I, I do understand like the neighbors do, that every project that comes before us isn't this well designed and that there is the opportunity to set a precedent here that, that could have some impact. I tend to think along the lines of Commissioner Mosley and think there's probably a compromise in here somewhere. Now, the neighborhood meeting was just a little over a week ago. And so I think, like Commissioner Johnson said, you know, there is, you know, more road in front of this project before it's completed. And I think that, that probably with, with all the teams working together, the neighborhood, with the development team, architects working together, I would hope they'd be able to find some compromise that would work with, with that. So, so with respect to 416 Jefferson Street, I, I move that we, that we approve this project with the conditions proposed by the staff as well as the charge to the development team, to the applicant and to the neighborhood group to continue to work together to find something that will work in the best interest of everyone.
There is a motion?
A second.
A second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, none opposed and the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time and the discussion.
So 1512 Dallas, it's a 1920 one-story home in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Back in 2018, a preservation permit was issued for an addition which was never constructed. The permit was revised and administratively reissued in June of 2020. No, no alterations beyond window replaced were noted on the plans. On February 9th, 2021, it was found that the house had been demolished, most of the house had been demolished beyond the front wall and the porch. The project was heard by the commission on March 12th, 2021 to show cause. The permit for the addition was rescinded and the applicant was required to reconstruct the historic building. The reconstruction permit was issued in April of 2021. Staff has been monitoring the project and has conducted multiple science inspections. All materials have also been approved by staff. The house was reconstruction, reconstructed according to the plans with the exception of the rear wall with the expectation that the addition was not reconstructed. At the time of the last site visit, the windows, door and roof shingles had yet to be installed. Staff will monitor the project and confirm that all the appropriate materials are installed. Finding that the historic home has been reconstructed following the requirements of the commission, staff recommends approval of the reconstruction and the reissuance of the permit for the addition.
Thank you, Kelly. Is the applicant here? Okay. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners? I think we're very familiar with this project.
So, Madam Chairman, this is a pretty straightforward project. We, like you said, we've seen this before. And with respect to 1512 Dallas Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Okay. None and the motion carries. Thank you.
I escorted the last applicant out into the hallway. Mr. Hurtado is here. This is 1204 Russell Street. It's a, a property you've seen before. The commission first saw this property regarding a show cause hearing in July after they had exceeded the scope of administrative permit. And it has returned in August, September and October for follow-up reviews as various things have gotten off track along the way. And at the last meeting in October, the, the commission instructed the applicant to reconstruct a cross gable of the primary roof and the porch as it was shown in a preservation permit that was issued and photographs with approved materials. And that was to be done in the next 60 days to install wider corner boards to match plans and photographs also within 60 days. To provide an application for a partially constructed outbuilding that had been started without permits and that the applicant was to return at subsequent Historic Zoning Commission meetings until the reconstruction was satisfactory completed. So they're here again to report progress on reconstruction that's taken place since that time. This was the front porch as it was, in the condition it was at the last commission meeting, with a roof form that had been altered. The porch floor had been enlarged and with constructed, a brick foundation wall constructed around the existing porch and some other changes to the porch. And then yesterday, you can see significant improvement has been made. It may be said that it's not perfect, but a huge improvement. The porch floor has been returned to its original size. The original concrete, that is the same concrete block that was there before, it still exists and it's been coated with a new parage coat. The porch floor has been encapsulated with a new poured concrete and poured concrete stairs replace the brick stairs that were there. The original columns are still there and they're ready to be capped with capital and, and trim, capital trim and bases. For the front gable, they have aligned the eaves, well, that's before. So last month, the, the roof had been altered so that the eaves did not align with their original location and they didn't align with the eaves of, or the cornice line of the front projecting bay. They've made adjustments to that as well and, and I guess I think you could say it's, again, it's still not perfect, but much improved. Regarding the outbuild, now that's just the total picture right there of the entire front facade. The architect I spoke to yesterday couldn't be here today, but they told me that they have a site plan ready to submit for the outbuilding, but they're just waiting to get an all-clear on the house before moving on with that. So that's the outbuilding. Staff recommends, same recommendation as last month, the staff recommends that the applicant continue with the reconstruction in accordance with the permit, the reconstruction permit and conditions of the October 20 decision. And then at the commission, and then return to the commission to report progress until the reconstruction is complete. And additionally, staff recommends that the site plan for the outbuilding must be submitted within 30 days or the outbuilding should be removed.
Sean, how many times are you all going there? Weekly, bi-weekly? Not going to put you on the spot, but just because we know the work you're doing.
Weekly, well, it's nearby, so I, I think we probably, probably go by weekly or more often informally, but we've, we've met with the architect maybe bi-weekly.
Okay.
Or architect or owner.
And so they tell you when they've, I wasn't here in October meeting, so thank you for the leniency on asking these questions. So do they call you and say, we have finished the step one, two, three, and that way you can go and make sure that these are being the requirements and coordinating the permit?
Yeah, they'll, they'll call or send an email or, or he'll send some photos and say, here, here I've done this and then we go out and take a look.
Okay.
He works very fast, so we try to keep up.
So according to the plan, is the staff good with reporting by Mr. Hurtado?
With his reporting and, and cooperation, yes. He is very diligent about asking, now, he's diligent about asking, you know, can I do this? Is this okay? Is this approved? Will this be approved? It was a learning process to, to get to that point, just somebody who's not familiar working with a, in a historic district. Sometimes there is a learning curve.
Good to hear. Thank you, Mr. Hurtado.
And Mr. Hurtado is here and...
Would you like to?
We can.
If you, applicant, are you, are you good? Do you want to? You do have a chance to talk to us.
Well, we don't, we didn't, we don't have an interpreter here at this time, but if you have any specific questions, I, I think we can probably get...
Okay. That was my question as well. So when you, when you have a conversation with Mr. Hurtado, do you have a, an interpreter or how does that happen?
Normally, sorry. Well, by email.
Okay, by email.
And, or with the architect who just couldn't be here today.
I mean, I think you understand why we're very diligent about asking you these questions because you have come before us several times and we do want to help you get through this. So, you know, we're not trying to prevent you from not, you know, finishing your project, but we, we are, it's good to hear, other than the commissioners might have other comments, is that you're following the requirements and that's what we had said to you from, I don't know, two or three times now. So we really appreciate that. I think you understand that in English, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. I got a question because I think the, the old house is most finished, right, Sheen? I mean, we can get the, the permit for the addition because they're already approved. The windows are there, everything is here.
I believe what Mr. Hurtado is asking is if he, if the commission finds the work that he's done on the reconstruction to be acceptable, that he can then move on with the addition for the rear addition that, actually, the rear addition was approved by the commission in September, I believe, with the condition that the work not start until the reconstruction was complete. So I think you would ask...
What is your recommendation on that?
We, we also have the issue that a garage was started without a permit and we still don't have the information to permit that.
Mr. Hurtado, you have to work, again, continue to working with the staff, just make sure that they approve every step you make.
Oh, yeah, we get it.
Yes. We don't want to spend any more money on this.
We talked to Sheen almost two or three days.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner.
So Sean and Robin, with this, what would you say would be the next step for Mr. Hurtado? I mean, what, when would we say, yes, we think this is, this particular reconstruction is good? Then we need to receive the plan, is it, we need to receive the plans for the addition and then we can, or, you know, what, I guess I've now gotten confused.
I think, yeah, we need to be really clear on what the next step is.
We have the plans for the addition because the addition was permitted and then that addition was rescinded. And then in addition to work happening on the house, a garage was started. And we've been asking for, I think all we need for that is a site plan, but we have not received it yet. So before we reissue the permit for the addition, our recommendation would be that we get everything worked out, that we have a complete application for the outbuilding and it's all something that can meet the guidelines and receive a permit and that the house is fully reconstructed before we keep moving on.
So maybe this is where we're going to, to that end and maybe communicating to the architect. Sean, that, short of some ceiling, are there additional windows? I mean, this, this looks pretty well on its way to being reconstructed. I'm saying this in that the commission, and maybe the commission isn't in the way of that, because if it was rescinded, does the staff have the ability to reissue that rescinded permit? No. And so in that case, I'm, I'm asking for the benefit of the applicant, leaving the judgment to the staff and their inspections on the site, if we could allow that to happen, assuming the applicant submits to you the garage, if it can be administratively approved, so that the applicant wouldn't need to appear before us again if the conditions are met that we might set here today.
Yes, you can add that to your current motion.
Does, do you have anything else? I will open public hearing unless you have something else to say.
No, no, we're just, that's all good. Thank you.
Okay.
To Mr. Hurtado?
Oh, Mr. Hurtado.
Mr. Hurtado, I just want to compliment you on, on the reconstruction, what you've done so far. It looks great. And I think that there was a lot of miscommunication going on and so, but I think you finally have the, the...
All the neighbors say it looks very good.
It looks great. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Open public hearing. Close public hearing. Okay. Commissioners, anything else to the, making sure we're doing our due diligence? Okay. Motion? We still have to make the motion.
Yeah, with, with respect to the application at 1204 Russell Street and the reconstruction progress update, I move approval of the staff's recommendation of the reconstruction in accordance with the permit so stated in the staff's recommendation. And additionally, at the staff's discretion, as the reconstruction continues, that we reinstate the previously approved permit for this address on an addition pending the submission by the applicant of a garage, a site plan, and any other drawings that may be required under the guidelines for a garage, assuming that that can be approved at the staff level, that the staff would then be in control of reissuing the necessary permits to complete all the contemplated work at 1204 Russell Street. I could just keep talking.
Thank you for that motion, sir. Is there a second to that? Very well said motion. Okay. You did say that very well, because you've got several seconds. All right, tell, all in favor?
Before you, before you vote, I was wondering if we, I could get a clarification, because we have been asking for the outbuilding application for several months, and so I wonder if we could add in there the 30 days that they need to get us that in 30 days, or take the outbuilding down.
Per staff recommendation, it is stated there.
And so, yes, in that, I, my, my motion was approval of the staff's recommendation, and so I would give a nod to the clarification by zoning administrator.
Okay. All right, and a second happened, and all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? So the motion passes. Okay, good luck, staff, and good luck, Mr. Hurtado.
Okay, the next item up is 308 to 310 Broadway. The building that houses the Candy Kitchen is a brick commercial building constructed in 2011. In 2015, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission approved, in addition to the structure, which finished out the second level and included a recessed third floor. The business to the right of Candy Kitchen uses the second level and rooftop that is above the Candy Kitchen. The applicant altered windows, added lighting, lighting, and installed signage without a permit. Windows were installed on the second level of the front facade without a permit and include a fixed and roll-up windows. The applicant has requested to keep the windows as currently installed. According to Section 2A4, replacement windows should have a single light or multi-light clear glass panes to match the style and period of the building. In this case, a single or double-hung window would be appropriate for the style of the building. Roll-up doors on upper levels are not seen in the, in the district historically, and the commission has not approved such windows for upper levels or for Broadway-facing elevations in the past. Poles and string lights have been added to the step-back of the rooftop. Design Guideline 3A2 states that the rooftop addition should be stepped back 30 feet, and so the commission has not approved construction even as simple as poles in this area. Options for lighting that might meet the design guidelines include bollard and recessed deck lighting, lighting on the inside of the parapet wall, lighting on the rooftop addition, and table lighting. Because the wall of the addition is stepped back 37 feet rather than just 30 feet, the applicant's letter proposes to allow poles and string lights in the seven-foot area outside the step-back area, but no drawings have been presented. In addition, all lighting should be simple and unobtrusive in both material and appearance. It should be directed towards the facade rather than outwards, according to Section 2M of the guidelines. The string lights are located in a highly visible location on the rooftop addition. While they are made from a dark material, as the guidelines suggest, they are overall not appropriate due to their location. The lighting and associated poles also do not comply with Section 3A2, as they are located in the 30-foot step-back area, where there should be no construction in order to lessen the visual impact of the rooftop addition. Two menu boards, each measuring 20 inches by 50, 24 inches by 50 inches, or approximately eight square feet, have been added to the storefront on the ground level. For this type of signage, the commission has allowed for a maximum of five square feet without the menu signs counting towards the signage allotment. The total area of menu signs installed is approximately 16 square feet. Staff recommends that the menu sign not exceed a total of five square feet, and the applicant has agreed to replace the menu signs to meet those requirement. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the windows and lighting, finding that they do not meet Section 2 and Section 3 of the Design Guidelines for Rehabilitation. Staff recommends that the unpermitted window and lighting and the associated poles be removed, and the menu signs changed to not exceed a total of five square feet within 60 days of the commission's decision.
Thank you, Melissa, is the applicant here? Please come forward.
Hello, we submitted our response in.
Please, please state your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Kimberly Fay with Waller-Lanston, and represent the applicant in this matter. The response that we submitted, as stated, we agreed to change the signage, and we're already in the process of getting that changed. The other two, well, the lighting is also something that we could potentially change as far as we've requested to be able to move it back within, within the appropriate distance. We feel, we haven't submitted drawings for that yet. We would be willing to do that, we just wanted to have the response as far as what we could do. And then for the windows, that's the more major adjustment that would have to be made. And for it, we, we are requesting for those to remain as-is, because we don't feel like it distracts from the appearance of the building. And with the security inlay, inlay of the, of the window, it would be difficult for us to be able to do the, the sliding doors. However, in y'all's discretion, we do realize that it is in violation as stated. However, it, with the, with the railings as, as is there, if we were able to move forward with those, and if, if not, have additional time in order to be able to replace those and fix them, rather than 60 days, because that would be more of a major renovation. Additionally, there is a sign permit that is also on the agenda for today for an outdoor sign, and it's our understanding that these violations are being required as, as being corrected in order for that sign permit to be allowed. We are willing to move forward with the corrections with the signage for the menu signs outside, as well as figuring out a resolution for the lights. However, the resolving the window issue could take longer than what it would for the outside sign that's at issue in the, in the later matter. So that was our reasoning for essentially requesting for the windows, either be approved as-is, or granted additional time, and not delay the approval of the sign permit that's up later in discussion.
Okay, give us just a moment. Robin, would you like to address that? The 308 sign versus this and how it's holding?
Yes, you should just review this project on.
Just keep it, okay.
Forget the sign for now, you'll have that later, and just review this project.
Yeah, we'll review this particular project, and we will, we review the other sign as well, so. Okay. You'll have to hang in here for a little bit.
If you, if, if we do approve, if we do say that we, you need to replace the windows, you're asking for additional time, how much time are you asking for?
I've been told exactly how much time that they would need, as, as much time as the commission feels would be appropriate for that degree of modification in the window.
Maybe some of the architects on this commission would, can give us some direction there.
Yeah, we can discuss, but windows lead time is very high right now. So, I mean, I do understand that, but that's, could be part of our discussion, but I think, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone here? Okay. Close public hearing. Commissioners?
I have a question for staff specifically related to what Commissioner Jones just pointed out. The approved windows in 20, in the 2015 application, were those storefront windows, or were they double-hung? Do we, do we know what was required there, or what would be required as a replacement?
Candy Kitchen is new construction, and so they, that was originally open-air. There weren't actually windows there. The original, when this, Candy Kitchen first came to us, they didn't want to build a two-story building, they only wanted a one-story building, and the guidelines require it would be at least two, so they did just sort of a false front on the second, and then it was enclosed later with a rooftop addition added.
Would, would storefront windows be appropriate if they looked like double-hung windows? Or not, would that not meet the guidelines?
We haven't seen anything that would. With a double-hung, you have, you know, the two panes are on different planes.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, no further explanation needed. I just was, it really is more of an issue of, of timing or additional timing, that, that's where the question was, is storefronts more readily available than, than a, than a double-hung or casement window that might be ordered from a manufacturer that's not local, or, it's not a pieces and parts solution, it's a, it's a fully framed item.
And let's dissect this a little bit, those couple, couple points. You got the unpermitted windows, you have lighting with the associated poles be removed, and the menu signs. So maybe we have to sort of, if you, we want to give a timeline on, like, okay, supplies for, supply chain for windows, is that longer? If we follow, so if we're going to say, yes, we need to remove that lighting, we give them how many days? Have they deferred this many times? You heard it last, last month? Okay. I, but what was?
So it sounds like the real question we have is the windows, and some of y'all are closer to that than, is 120 days enough? Is it, does it need to be more than that?
You know, is there a way to, for them, you know, to, there's maybe a timeframe of showing that they have been, you know, ordered, they are on the way, you know, I mean, again, it's just, here's the order, this would fit, you know, here are the windows as, as proposed, yes, this fits in the guidelines, they are ordered, and then maybe be able to move forward, just because, again, you know, things are just on order, and then you just honestly don't know. And I don't, again, I definitely want these to be, I mean, I, I want these to be corrected to, to what's approved in the guidelines, but it's the giving a specific timeline, and not of the applicant's fault, if they could order it this week, and they, honestly, we just don't know.
So I think I may have a solution. Let me, let me throw this one out. So with respect to 308 through 310 Broadway, I move for disapproval of the windows and lighting, and that the unpermitted windows and lighting, with the associated poles be removed, and that the, that the unpermitted lighting and associated poles be removed, menu signs changed to not exceed a total of five square feet, and that evidence be presented to staff that windows have been ordered, and a contract has been executed for replacement of those windows, that the windows submittal be submitted to staff for approval prior to that order being placed, and that all this be accomplished in not more than 60 days.
There is a motion, there's a second. Any discussion?
I would further, assuming the applicant, we're requiring the applicant to have a design submitted, and somebody hired to put this in so that there is a submittal with a price associated with it. If we're going to go that far, I think having, knowing what the lead time is, and then having a schedule submitted from the general contractor, whomever, whomever they are going to hire to do this, that some schedule with, with some, once the windows come in, that, that the follow-through is, also has some, not a date certain, but some end, and we'll leave that to the discretion of the staff, that some schedule be submitted as an additional condition of this motion.
Agreed. Yep, good.
Robin, is that good?
One more time, please.
For the full motion, or?
No, just the timeline for the, the window scheduling.
I just meant, sorry, I was trying to get it all down correctly, and I missed what Commissioner Mosley said.
Just that a schedule for installation be submitted along with the other requirements that Commissioner Stewart put on the application.
You could probably, you knew that pretty easily in the original motion by saying that, you know, a contract be supplied with a contractor to do the work, including a schedule of the work to be completed, including windows to be received and to be installed.
That was a reinstated motion. And there was a second to that. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. The motion passes. Just one more thing, as chair courtesy here. I know that number R is going to be probably a longer discussion, so after 600 Fatherland, let's take a 10-minute break.
So 600 A and B Fatherland is a non-contributing duplex in Edgefield. The current infill was approved by the commission in July of 2014 and permitted the same month. The original permit did include a wood rear fence with no front yard fence. The current fences were constructed without a permit, and this issue was on the agenda for last month, but was deferred by the applicant. While the fences meet Section 41A of the guidelines for height, they do not meet Sections 1, 41C, and 3BG for materials. The front fence, front fence is constructed of black aluminum. According to the guidelines, iron fences are only appropriate for pre-1900s homes. Front fences should also be constructed of wood. The rear fence is constructed of vinyl, which is not, not historic material, and not allowed to be used for other architectural features in the district. The guidelines for this district specify that rear fences may be wood in certain times, types of chain link. The applicant proposes placing their faux wooden fence in front of the final fence facing South Sixth Street to retain aluminum fences. Staff does not recommend this solution, as vinyl will likely still be visible, and aluminum fences will not, would not be removed. Staff recommends that, that the rear and front yard fences be removed within 60 days from the commission's decision, finding that does not meet Section 4 for fencing material and Section 3 for materials in the design guidelines. Denial of the fencing would, does not preclude the applicant from submitting a new application for fencing.
Thank you, Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Yates, so I actually own the B side of 600 Fatherland, and then Edwin Mayer is here as well, and he owns the A side of Fatherland. So I'll be speaking on behalf of both of us. Just a little history, so Edwin actually bought his side of the property new in 2015, and then I moved from Florida in 2018, early 2018, and bought my portion of the townhome. I will say that I absolutely love East Nashville and the Edgefield community, so the last thing I wanted to be is the bad kid on the block. But anyways, I did want to talk through kind of what brought us to the decision of the fences. I will say that we researched the permit requirements through Metro, but totally missed the overlay requirement. So understand that the property, proper permitting steps were not followed prior to constructing both fences, so definitely appreciate the opportunity to talk through the violation. There was really two major factors in kind of how we came to the conclusion of the fences and what we did with both the rear and the front. The first one is security of the property, and then also us. Although the wood is the preferred material for the fences per the Edgefield handbook, Edwin and I have both had security challenges since we, since owning the properties. Wood does not maintain its integrity. Over a long period of time, it does not resist damage compared to some other materials. South Sixth Street, so that was shown in one of the pictures, which is along the southwest side of the property, tends to be a heavily traveled path by both vehicles and foot traffic to get, really for kind of the woodland main street, and then down to the community get really for kind of the woodland main street and then down to the community, it's just south side of our property and that community. So some of the security issues that we've dealt with in the past include, but not limited to, people kicking in the fence panels and posts, sleeping on our porches. Adjacent cul-de-sac is used for congregation and maintenance of vehicles. And then also, we've had strangers fraternizing in the front yards and I personally had somebody throw a brick and break one of my side windows. So really, security was one of the, one of the two main factors. And then obviously aesthetics, and this is really where the design guideline comes in. So 600 Fatherland is, as you guys saw, is really, it's not a historic home. The adjacent property is very, pretty drastically, just due to where we're at in the overlay. So we're right on the border of that. So I would say anyone really not well-versed would not notice the delineations. For the front yard, we do maintain the position as included in the packet that we sent over that there's other aluminum fences that exist in the overlay that are, and so both for the pre-1900 houses, they have some aluminum fences and then there's other houses in the overlay that also have the aluminum fences. So we didn't think that the black aluminum fence in the front was really that far outside of the appearance of some of the other properties in the neighborhood. In addition, the fence matches our mailbox and really the look and the aesthetics of our property. So the backyard, definitely understood that vinyl is not really found anywhere in the neighborhood, so very aware of that now after digging into the overlay, the other properties. So that's why in this last revision, we did propose to try to avoid full removal of the back fence, is installing a faux wood fence. So we can either leave it wood or paint it white. That may also help the concern with maybe seeing the vinyl. If both fences are white, then hopefully it wouldn't stick out. But at this point, we will, are willing to hear options and really whatever we can do to quote-unquote camouflage the backyard fences, to try not to remove it completely and replace it. So really, in conclusion, our request, and I believe it fall with the approval for conditions or with conditions, we think it's a minimal impact to the integrity of the intent of the historic preservation overlay while still providing some benefits and security to our property. So really, in the overall intent of these two fences was to improve and invest in the property, really not in any intent of not following requirements. So respectfully, we're requesting the front fence to remain and then approval of some version of camouflage or the faux wood fence in the back to bring the vinyl fence back in line with what the design requirements are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Oh, are you an applicant as well? Or you're just public hearing? Gotcha. All right, come on forward. Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Darden Copeland. I own the property at 708 Boscabel, parallel to Fatherland. When I moved here 15 years ago, bought in this neighborhood for the historic overlay. Love it. Unfortunately, bought the smallest house on the block and after two kids, my wife and I moved over to Cherokee Park, also has a similar overlay, and for that reason, decided to locate in that neighborhood. We've held on to our place in Boscabel, so I still own the property there. We have a long-term tenant there. And in addition, have an old historic building downtown where I put my PR firm. It has a historic, we're on the National Registry of Historic Places. It was on the Nashville Nine, the Historic Commission, or excuse me, the Historic Nashville. So understand historic preservation and what this board does and appreciate everything that you all do. I asked the applicant to defer last month so that we could go speak with Councilman Withers as well as the Neighborhood Association. We were not able to do that because they're not meeting, A, due to COVID, but B, they're meeting every other month. So we've not been able to sit down with the HOA there. But I can tell you in surveying dozens of my neighbors and former friends that live in this neighborhood and taking the images of the property and the fences, they all agree that this fence is fine. So I do speak on behalf of a number of the community members there that I have surveyed personally. As a property owner there, I hope that we can find a way to allow the applicant to continue with the fences they have or come to some sort of compromise that would work out for both of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing. One comment I will make on that is that we understand when neighbors are supportive of their neighbor. Absolutely. Where we are cautioned and where our purview is, is that your neighbors or those neighborhood associations have created these guidelines, not us. So when it has very specific guidelines and applicant, we understand, honest mistake, we hear that, is that we are beholden to these requirements. So a matter of personal opinion and recommendation, absolutely, we hear it. But again, our purview is under the guidelines, which was created by the neighborhood. So again, any kind of exceptions that we would make, that would be pushing that envelope. So just comment. Did I close the public hearing? Yes, I did. Okay, Commissioners.
I'm reading the guidelines on the front fence. It says, "New or reclaimed iron fencing may be, may be appropriate for pre-1900 houses. Iron fencing is generally not appropriate for later houses." Does that mean that a wood fence is the only option? As I read that, that seems unusual or maybe unintended. I don't know. I'm talking about 41D, "New or reclaimed iron fencing may be appropriate for pre-1900 houses. Iron fencing is generally not appropriate for later houses." And I think, well, this is not iron fencing, it's aluminum fencing. It's certainly aluminum fencing made to look like iron fencing, which may or may not be, that's another issue for discussion. But I think that if that's the case, then wood pickets are the only thing that's appropriate. And that just seems curious to me for the front fence. The vinyl, that's a tougher sell for me, for sure.
I'd like to hear what the answer to Ben's question might be.
That is up to you. It is your purview to interpret the design guidelines. We just took them at face value and, but you can change that.
So do you suggest that the applicant submit a new applicant, application for replacement fencing and that we look at that again?
We did suggest that, but they would like to ask for you to keep, they would like to ask to keep what they have.
Oh, I thought she said that she was willing to replace the back fence with other material.
She, they suggested putting wood in front of it, which we didn't think met the guidelines.
Okay.
But again, that's up to you.
Okay.
And I heard her say she was open to other solutions. Staff doesn't have any others, but you know, you may.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the commission or the staff rightfully has put it back on us, as I see. Iron fencing is generally not appropriate for later houses. The guideline is as written. So that one's, that does leave it to be only wood, which requires a tremendous amount of maintenance. So I didn't put a wood fence at my house in Germantown for that reason. But that's a whole different district and a different issue altogether.
Not that the examples of other homes, historic, you know, do have, if they're iron or aluminum, you know, that, it's compelling to see. I'm not giving a yes or no on that. It's just that in context with neighboring properties, and I don't know when that year of the guidelines kicked in, whether that was before that or not, but it's compelling. Only for the front yard. The white fencing, not compelled.
Is there a prohibition against aluminum fencing? Is there something specifically that says that they cannot have what they have in front of them in their houses now?
Commissioner Mosley said it appears that it's, that it's only allowing for wood picket fences in the front. And then if you look at the drawings that are in the guidelines, those are all picket examples. So again, that's how staff read it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess this is an interesting one. For some, I don't know how this is in all my years, one of the first fencing ones I've ever seen, to be honest. So always something new. But yeah, I think that is, again, due to that, I think it is a little surprising that, because when I saw this, when I was looking through the packet, I thought, well, that to me looks nice, but that it is, I think it looks nice, but it is in direct conflict with the guidelines is where I'm sitting now. But again, I, the front one, I could be persuaded that, but then I think it's, if these come again, we're gonna have, then that's now the precedent for all of the front yards. So that's one thing to think about. The backyard, yeah, the vinyl is a, is a total no-go for me. But I don't know the solution, you know, I don't understand how a faux, you know, would work. I don't think that's the solution either, you know. So I think we'd need a new plan for the, for the backyard for sure. But again, I'm just, that's an interesting guideline, I think, that we've, that I really don't remember ever coming up as a point of contention.
Yeah, I was, you know, reading fencing material, 3BG. It said, "The material texture, detail, and material color of a new building's public facade shall be visually comparable by not contrasting greatly with surrounding historic buildings. Vinyl and aluminum siding are not appropriate." That's for the fencing material. So, you know, it's clearly stated. So unless, you know, we or a community change that guideline, I think we cannot approve it. I mean, I do sympathize, but because its guideline is clear. So only solution is for suggest the neighborhood association to get together and, you know, petition us to change the guideline. I think that's the only solution for us to approve the fencing material. Otherwise, you know, we can approve left and right because of, looks nice or because of the neighborhood thinks it's okay. You know, we don't have any guideline to follow back to, so.
Yeah, I will say that I think these are so hard for us. Like, we absolutely hate to see projects that aren't in compliance and, or elements and, because, I mean, we realize it is, you know, it becomes a financial burden and it's hard to, to tell someone that they've got to remove something. But I am in full agreement with the staff recommendation on this one. It's just hard, hard to, you know, we have to rule for the project, not the, for the, you know, for the, for the place and the project, not the person.
I'm gonna, not a disagreement, but I'm trying to ferret my way through these guidelines that are obviously in this class unclear enough that, or maybe they're not unclear and that's kind of the point. But guidelines that are, 3BG is specifically related to materials on the building. That's what 3BG is. It's not a fence guideline, per se. I mean, it's not written under the fence guidelines. Now, taking generally vinyl and aluminum siding are not appropriate, admittedly. And you could, one could make the leap that, well, and that is not, also applies to fencing materials. And so vinyl and aluminum are not appropriate. That's one way to look at it. Further down, where it specifically addresses fences, wood pickets are certainly appropriate. There's no question about that. Chain link are generally not appropriate for front or visible side yards. It doesn't mention rear yards. And I think that's intentional. They may be appropriate along rear property lines if the fence is camouflaged with plantings or painted black or dark green. And then it goes on to say, "New or reclaimed iron fencing may be appropriate for pre-1900 housings, 1900 houses. Iron fences in general may not be appropriate for later houses." I mean, that specifically applies to this project, for sure. I think it's really hard to weave your way through all of those things and make sense out of, out of, out of all of this and specifically hang my hat on, oh, this didn't, this doesn't work because, because of any of these. Being permissive of a chain link fence in the rear yard is pretty permissive as fences go.
But since, well, I wonder, it also had, you know, not highly visible, you know, and this is on the corner.
And I'm certainly not suggesting that.
Yeah, so that's also an interesting point, you know, is this rear yard also kind of a side yard? Because I mean, it's highly visible, you're in the corner, you're on the street. Again, that's another question that I would raise.
And one thing that, that kind of guides me is that they didn't have aluminum or vinyl when this house was built. So it's, it's not appropriately historical, historic properties. So that's, I lean towards what the staff recommends.
Let me ask one question to the staff. I know we, you know, consolidated the guideline, but would it be possible we kind of really get into fencing material per se? Because otherwise, you know, Commissioner Mosley said it's only wood picket fence, otherwise no fence, seems like. So in that sense, because some, you know, material area uses other material other than, you know, wood. So would there be oversight or is it expressively, you know, rejected as, you know, other aluminum or those kind of material?
The consolidated guidelines are for neighborhood conservation zoning overlays and this is a historic preservation. And so the consolidated guidelines don't talk about fencing at all because you don't review fencing there. That's just for these historic districts, which, you know, there's a, it's a heavier hand, I guess you could say, on those guidelines. They cover more and they're a little bit stricter in terms of maintaining the historic character. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I mean, you know, one says I try to be, to follow, you know, historic design guideline, but the other says I'm trying to accommodate if, you know, there was some oversight or a neighborhood kind of overlooked, you know, because as time flies, the material changes. So if that's the case, we, as a commissioner, what kind of tool we have to accommodate, you know, neighborhood needs. So that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah. Applicant, this is a toughie for us.
You know, it's really a hard one because as Ziegler said, it's, it's, you know, our more stringent guidelines designed for a neighborhood that has a lot of really historic homes that, that require, you know, more detail than what just a conservation overlay would. And yet, in this context, you know, it's not one of those historic homes that's, you know, ancient. And so it really is a hard one. You know, and I struggle with things like, you know, we do now allow some vinyl windows on, for replacement windows and, but we do object to the appearance of it with it being glossy as opposed to looking more like a wood finish, wood. So I'm So I'm torn between this one. I think any decision we come up with, I won't be perfectly comfortable with, but we don't want to set a precedent so that we wind up with, you know, lightweight aluminum fences in front of especially historic homes and that kind of thing, so. So I'm torn between this one.
I am trying to kinda throw in kinda middle ground, because this house is infill. So I think true historical nature to have a material other than a historic guideline is totally inappropriate. I totally agree with it. But do we as a, you know, commissioner have leverage to allow infill specific? Would there be some kind of solution for us to come with? Because, you know, I really hate to see historic houses coming with aluminum fence. It does not, you know, true historical rehabilitation does, and new material does not match. But infill, I think there's some room, just kinda throwing it.
If we do something that, to me is, well, if you do something like that, because it's at the edge of the district and it is an infill home, might be a way to be permissive in this instance, if you were so inclined, and a house that didn't meet that criteria, you know, doesn't use the precedent argument, we consider each of these on their own merits, so.
We are, our hands are so tied because of, you know, setting precedents. And I think we do have really good logic in when we say, yes, it's an infill, it's not historic property, and yet we're in a historic edge field. I think our hands are tied and going down a rabbit hole creates more complications for our commission. When it's not just personal, it's because another applicant's gonna say, why did you not approve mine when you approved that as an exception? I think just caution ourselves when we make that kind of, I think when we, when we have this discussion and the public hears us very clearly that we really try to work with the applicant, we're not trying to prevent that. But again, I think I also like your comment, Commissioner, about if there are changes to this guideline, that the council member will go back to the Edgefield Association and will go, let's look at this again. I mean, I know we've just been through a lot of that the last two, two years, but that's the only way that we can move that we feel that we have done our job.
The, maybe, I'm never a fan of us kicking the can down the road and being unwilling to decide, or generally not in favor of that. The neighbor across the street mentioned that, you know, we're in an off, off month for the board to weigh in and for the council member to weigh in on this case. Would it harm this board to, and the staff to, if there were a deferral requested by the applicant, would we be willing to grant that again so that perhaps that additional commentary could be heard?
I guess I don't know what that's gonna accomplish.
Like I said, I don't like kicking these down the road. It's just delaying inevitable.
I'm personally in agreement with the guidelines, and like, if this were a new application, sometimes when these cases come up, I try to look at it like, let's forget it's built. If this were a new application, would I vote for it or against it? And I would vote against it. And that's where my head's at.
Okay, let's do it. I urge us to keep moving. We have done some good deliberation. I think we are, yes, please.
Madam Chair, with respect to 600 Fatherland Street, I recommend that we vote for the staff recommendations.
There is a motion? Is there a second? Okay, there's a second, all in favor of the motion. I'm gonna just say, because there could be some, is let's just raise our hands for yes. Okay, Robin, you've got that? Not me, but. Okay, there's one, two, three, four, five, and who is opposed? Okay, there's two opposed. Very good. Thank you for that. Okay? And so there we have our vote. And we will thank the applicant, and we will, we've already closed public hearing, I'm sorry. If you have any comments, you'll have to talk to the staff. Thank you again for this deliberation. And we are taking a 10-minute break. 30 seconds? Okay. Thank you for that break.
Okay, the next one is 1900 Forest Avenue. The application is for demolition of the contributing home at 1900 Forest Avenue, arguing for economic hardship. The house at 1900 Forest Avenue is a circa 1926 contributing home in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The house was constructed by Churchill Sexton and his wife, Nora Hurst Sexton, and served as their country home, which they named Lake Hurst. Churchill Sexton was a prolific developer in the area and was responsible for the development of much of the Little Hollywood neighborhood of East Nashville. The house is located on a five-acre lot of land at the end of Forest Avenue in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant has provided two engineering reports as part of their application for demolition of the home. The reports state that the home had issues with sagging floor joists, improper supports, overspanned floor joists, and improper framing. They point out issues with moisture intrusion and damage, microbial growth, rotten termite damage, unconventional construction methods, and atypical repairs in the foundation that have led to instances of structural movement, sheer cracking in foundation walls, as well as possible asbestos on ductwork. Staff recently visited the home and observed many of the issues noted in the provided reports. Staff found most of these issues to be issues commonly found in structures of this age. Repairs and reinforcing are often necessary but rarely require full demolition of the structure. While there is no doubt that there are issues with the home, largely due to its age and recent years of neglect, staff finds that the issues have not risen to such a level where the home is beyond reasonable repair. Furthermore, while the engineering reports were helpful in identifying issues that may need to be addressed, they also provided many reasonable solutions, indicating to staff that repair and rehabilitation of the structure is not impossible. Along with the engineering reports, the applicant has submitted an estimated cost of demolition of $17,550 and an estimated cost of compliance of $250,000 to $300,000. When considering economic hardship, the Metro Historic Zoning Commission looks at those costs needed to make the building usable, not at proposed new construction or additional costs that a user of the building may want, but that are not necessary for occupation. For that reason, staff finds that some of the line items included in the cost of compliance could be reduced or eliminated altogether. Therefore, the cost of rehabilitation may prove lower than indicated. The applicant also estimates a market value of $200,000 to $300,000 in the home's current condition, and estimates a market value of $300,000 to $400,000 after restoration. A report from RealTrack showing median home sales prices was included to support this estimate, but contextual information used to generate the report was not provided. So it is not known whether the property is being compared to historic homes, homes of a similar age, homes within the overlay, or homes from the same time period. It is the responsibility of the applicant to provide detailed information regarding comps, but staff reviewed some information readily available on the Assessor of Properties website. Since January of this year, the average sales price within .1 miles of 1900 Forest has averaged at approximately $351 per square feet. Not counting porches, garage space, and potential second-level space, 1900 Forest has a footprint of approximately 1,600 square feet, which could result in a sales price of approximately $560,000. This does not include the possibility of additions and how that could also add to the value. Staff also notes that the home sits on a lot that is over five acres, much of which is not developable, not developable. However, there is the possibility of a lot to the west of the property, on the right side, that could be subdivided and meet the development pattern of the neighborhood. Sell of the lot, improved or not, could be sold to fund rehabilitation of this home. The current owner has only owned the property since May, and so he's not responsible for the disrepair and deterioration of the home. However, the home has experienced neglect for a number of years. The disrepair of the home due to neglect is evident from just a simple walkthrough, and it is incumbent on the applicant to make an informed purchase. Staff finds that the cost proposed for rehabilitation is not uncommon for a home of this age and is often understood as a possible obstacle that comes with the risk of purchasing an old home, especially that one that has experienced a period of neglect as this one has. It is the commission's primary goal to ensure the preservation of historic buildings. Demolition requests are reviewed by staff in detail, providing not only an analysis of information given, but an analysis of what questions remain. It is the responsibility of the applicant to prove this hardship rather than for staff to disprove this hardship. Economic hardship is not based on the personal hardship of the owner, whether or not new construction would be cheaper, or the ability of the property owner to realize the highest and best use of the property. Staff recommends denial of demolition of 1900 Forest Avenue, finding that the project does not meet Section 3B2A nor 1740420E of the zoning ordinance for economic hardship, and does not meet Section 3B2B as the building is contributing. I believe the applicant is here and would like to speak.
Thank you, Joseph. Mr. Applicant, Mr. or Mrs. Applicant?
Good evening. I'm BJ Bush. I'm with Powell Nashville, with an architecture firm that's representing the client. The first point I'd like to cover is that the clients, when they purchased the property, had no intention of demolishing the house. They did tour the house before purchasing the lot and knew that the house needed some repairs. However, due to the nature of natural real estate, as we're all aware of it, they did not have the time to have the house inspected by a professional before they went through with the purchase. They currently live in a house that is 100 years old and have stated that they love old houses. And even if the house is demolished or proved to be demolished, they fully intend to rebuild something in the same footprint and same character as the existing home. To further emphasize this point, I've provided a letter from an adjacent neighbor, of which was also signed by several more neighbors. Our clients are working with this neighbor to sell off 3.9 acres to extend the Lachlan Springs Park area. They do not intend to develop this lot with greater density or subdivide with multiple tall and skinny houses per lot. My clients are not developers. They love this home, but due to many years, the many years of neglect and eight years of vacancy, which you, as, which you know is not the fault of our client, the damage to the structure, siding, flooring, and finishes is just too much to repair with a reasonable budget. Powell has consulted with many different professional contractors and engineers in their assessment of the costs associated with bringing this house up to current code requirements. Many of our findings were, in our opinion, misrepresented in the staff's report. The report has attempted to make an argument that the costs provided by our construction professionals are not accurate or cover items not needed. With all due respect, when it comes to what these repairs will cost, our clients must rely on professional opinions and recommendations of engineers and contractors and not the opinions of the staff. Or at the very least, our client needs to see a counter presentation on cost and repair recommendations presented by other professional engineers and construction estimators. A large portion of the response to our cost estimates for partial demolition were questioned. The report says that if the house contains a large amount, a large amount of asbestos, lead paint, and microbial growth, the client can't paint over it or leave it undisturbed. We do not think this is advisable, given that our clients have a small child who could be exposed to these elements unknowingly. We feel a very vital portion of the home inspection was left out of the staff's response. On page 62 of this report, the home inspector gave his observation regarding the structure of the house. He stated, "Extensive rot and termite damage were found throughout the home. While the rot was isolated around moisture entry points and within the basement, the termite damage found was pervasive throughout the entirety of the structure. In some areas, the deterioration and termite damage had significantly weakened the framing components with visible evidence of movement and compromised framing components." This observation is not exaggerated. It is our professional opinion that executing the repairs that our engineers have recommended to repair the structure would leave very little of the existing house remaining. In addition, the portions of the house that would remain would need to be modified or reworked to function under existing code. The staff dismisses the extent of these repairs with two sentences on page 10 of their report. "On rare occasions, undiscovered conditions rise to a point where demolition is the only path forward." However, staff finds that not to be the case here. I would be very interested to see the baseline that the staff used to form this opinion. We also have a recommendation by one of the structural engineers that the house needs to be demolished due to what it would take to even attempt to make these repairs. The damage is not isolated to a few areas, and it is expected to be pervasive throughout the area, every area of the house that is not visible right now. We strongly disagree with the staff's opinion that you can sister onto rotted wood. You can sometimes sister when there are reliable bearing points that new framing can attach to, but this is not the case with this house. The sill plates are all rotted and need to be replaced. In order to replace sill plates, you first have to remove plaster, the plaster that's covering them, and then cut away all studs, including the existing siding." Now, of course, this can be done, and it's done only when you're replacing isolated sills, but not when you are replacing all sills. Really, this is one of the main issues. In fact, our demolition contractor would not even let his employees walk in the house without shoring up the entire structure first. He thought it unsafe to walk in. In closing, we strongly disagree with the staff's opinion that these sorts of repairs are typical for this age of house, while most houses of this age may have some of these issues. They are typically isolated and are in homes that have been continually occupied. When you have a house that has been vacant for over eight years and exposed to moisture, freezing, extreme heat, and the damage and deterioration of the house is far from typical. We thank the two commissioners that came out to visit the site at their own risk, and we appreciate the rest of the commissioner's time and consideration. The last point we would like to leave you with is the first point that I made. Our clients do not want to demolish this house. They love old homes. They are not developers. They, in fact, if granted the approval to demolish the house today, will build back a similar house with a similar footprint and architectural character. They are also preserving 3.9 acres of their land to extend Lachlan Springs Park, and they have their neighbor's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the applicant for a moment? Okay, we might have some later. Open public hearing. Close public hearing. Commissioners?
I'll start a discussion. I, Commissioner Price and I visited, visited this house. I was hoping he would be here because I was interested to hear his, his input as well. I mean, the house, there is no doubt that it is in a deteriorated state, and it's really sad because it is a, it is a beautiful house and has some really sweet, delicate details on it. I guess I'm interested in hearing from everyone else. There is, there is deterioration that's hard to see, some of it. We did go in the basement and throughout the house. I guess the thing I'm struggling with is the GSE structural report, because for every item, it lists remedial action, and that's where I'm really, really stuck. Because they have recommended things that can be done. Anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Madam Chair, since I did not go through the walkthrough, but I have seen engineering report, and I have seen... report, and I have seen, you know, all the pictures, so I am solely relying on the material presented to us. And so what overall I'm missing is comparison. So when applicant asks for economic hardship, number one thing I'm looking for is comparison, the cost comparison, what it would take to demolish and, you know, build new construction in detail, and what it will take to compliance rehabilitation and be building up to, you know, a good stage. So I did not see any, you know, those comparisons other than rough number, 250 to 300,000, or, you know, 200 to 400, just a round up number. So that detail is missing. So I would like to address, you know, since we do have to, we have eight points to consider, so I would like to go through all eight points one by one. So first one is cost of demolition and proposed development, as I stated. So demolition cost and, you know, estimated cost was provided, however, you know, as I said, no data to compare demolition and reconstruction cost versus rehabilitation cost. So to me, incomplete data, so number one, condition number one does not meet. Number two, report from licensed engineer or architect with experience in rehabilitation. Yes, we have received a report from GSE consulting engineering, CSA engineering, and both appear to have wide variety of experience, but the experience is in heavy industrial, commercial, and government. All these projects, I did not see any historical residence rehabilitation in their experience, nor a report from the applicant. And diligent home inspection report, it's list and finding, and, you know, sagging floors, joints, improper support, and cracking, and wall uncovering, moisture, and so forth, yes. But again, you know, it says repairs needed, but the applicant nor, you know, those engineer did not provide us the cost comparison. How, how much would it take to up to, bring it up to, you know, compliance? So for that, I cannot meet, required number two was met. Number three, estimate market value of the property value is current condition and estimate market value after the proposed repair. So that's the number three. So again, the no comparison, the cost comparison of the current fair market value was not provided from the applicant, so I cannot have, condition three was met. And number four, estimate from architect, developer, real estate consultant, and appraisal, and so forth. In this, you know, applicant submitted their opinion, you know, they do not think bringing house to the historical commission standards or current code condition be either economically or logically, you know, sound, but that's their opinion. I do not see any data to back up their legitimacy or, you know, professional opinion to back up applicant opinion. So to me, so condition four, therefore, condition four was not met. So number five, amount paid for the property, the date of purchase, yes, that was provided. You know, the amount paid was 2.5 million, but that alone does not meet economic hardship. Again, we have to compare what's the cost to rehabilitation versus demolition and reconstruction, so incomplete data. So number six, property is income producing and so forth, it is not. So number six, condition is not applicable. Number seven, any information to consider necessary, so we have not received any other condition, so number seven is not applicable. Number eight, hardship is not self-imposed. Yes, understand this house has been unoccupied for a while, but, you know, this house was up on the market since 2018, and I have found some YouTube video to show inside of the house, and yes, applicant or purchaser may not have had enough time to inspect, but even that, you know, we can see the house is not the best condition. So just because hardship is not self-imposed does not meet the, you know, requirement. So overall, I think, you know, bottom of the applicant applying for the demolition based on economic hardship is to provide detailed information for us, for us to compare the cost of demolition and rehabilitation versus cost of compliance. So overall, you know, I have not seen any detailed data to, you know, give, yes, indeed, applicant give us that data. So for that reason, I am in support of the staff recommendation that this does not meet economic hardship.
Tough act to follow, but I do seriously tend to, again, we take these, I think, the most serious way for us, and I do think, as I was looking through the packet, you know, in previous applications that we've maybe gotten an approved, there was just the, the math of this is this and this is this, and I, and I also was missing that in this, and therefore, I think the application, it's incomplete to me for, for being able to grant this hardship, and so therefore, I'm not comfortable saying approving it, and therefore, I'm going with staff recommendation on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I too agree with the staff recommendation. Think the staff did a very good job at not only the report, but, but presenting the evidence that's been sent by the applicant and then reviewed by the staff. And I think, to me, the most compelling part of this was the structural report that basically listed all the deficiencies and then what could be done to remedy those conditions. And so, so based on that and hearing the other commissioners with respect to 1900 Forest Avenue, I move that we deny this demolition request with staff conditions.
There is a motion?
Second.
There is a second? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, applicant.
The next item is 2410 Ninth Avenue South, which was constructed between 1940 and 1941. As, when we researched it, we found the first, the house first appears in the city directory in 1941. The house contributes to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The stone veneer on the front and the front porch were not original to the house. They are added in the late 1950s. Here is the proposed front facade. The applicant intends to remove the existing six-foot-by-10-foot front porch and construct a full-width front porch. The applicant also proposes to move the nonhistoric stone on the front and the vinyl siding on the side and replace these materials with brick. So that was what was in the application. I met with the applicants yesterday. Staff is recommending for the brick that it be a lapped siding, because we know historically the house was lapped siding, and they have agreed to, to that point, so I won't discuss that point in depth. So first, I'll talk about the proposed front porch. Originally, the house did not have a front porch. On the left is a 1957 Sanborn map, which shows the house, it does not show a front porch. Typically, you would see on these Sanborn maps like a dotted line or square that would indicate a porch. You can kind of see it a little bit on the one at 2412 Ninth Avenue South, but you don't see it at 2410 Ninth Avenue South. A lack of a front porch was a common feature of minimal traditional houses constructed in the 1940s, like 2410 Ninth Avenue South. In fact, the earliest Sanborn map for this area showing the houses on this block, which is the 1951 Sanborn map, which is up there, shows that most houses did not have a front, front porch historically. Again, usually you see kind of a little dotted line, but you don't see that there. The design guidelines state that adding front porches to contributing houses that did not have a front porch historically is not appropriate. Because there is an existing nonhistoric front porch that dates to them in 1950s, staff finds that replacing the existing front porch with the new porch that has the same footprint to be appropriate. However, staff does not find that expanding the footprint of the porch to span the entire main front facade of the house to be appropriate, because that creates a false sense of history and changes the style of the house from a minimal traditional style to more of a craftsman bungalow style. Staff therefore recommends that the front, the footprint of the new porch be no larger than six feet deep and 10 feet wide to match the existing or less than that. This will ensure that the house remains as close as possible to its original form. So also, again, with the materials, the applicant is proposing to move the nonhistoric stone on the front and the vinyl, vinyl siding on the side. Staff recommends that when the vinyl siding in particular is removed, that staff goes out to inspect what's underneath it, to see if there's any historic materials underneath it that can be reused. We are assuming that there's nothing under the, the brick, the stone that can be reused, but same goes for that, so. And again, the applicant originally proposed to have a brick facade, but they have agreed to go with a lapped siding facade. Now for the addition, the addition will meet all base zoning setbacks. The addition's footprint will slightly more than double the footprint of the historic house, which staff finds to be appropriate for several reasons. First, the lot is unusually large at over 14,000 square feet. Second, the addition's footprint is similar to the footprint of the addition MHCC approved here in, we approved a previous addition in 2020, and this footprint is very similar to the footprint that was previously approved. And lastly, this addition is shorter in height and has the appropriate insides. It does not include a ridge raise, and overall, staff finds that its scale is appropriate to the historic house. The applicant is also proposing a dadu. This dadu that you're seeing here, its dormers are about 20 feet wide, and the design guidelines limit them to 14 feet. Also, the design guidelines only allows for one wall dormer, and one of these is, there's two wall dormers. The applicant has agreed to kind of revise the dadu to meet the design guidelines. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions, and of these conditions, I'm not going to read them all because they're kind of lengthy, the only one that the applicant wishes, or that does not agree with and wishes you to consider is the third one, the new front porch have a footprint that is no wider than the six-foot-by-10-foot footprint of the existing front porch. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'll pass it on.
Just general comment, is that it's great to see recommendations on shoring plan. I think that we're just starting to see that. So staff, that's right on. I think we kind of learned our lesson on one or two of those, and I think it's just a really good step to be sure we get that across. So just general comment. Is the applicant here? Yes. Did not want to overlook you, Mr. Henry.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Members of the commission, good to see you all, and thank you for your service. My name's Sean Henry, 511th Avenue North, and I represent the property owner, Ryan Holmgren. Also here today is John Rankin, who would speak after me. Mr. Holmgren is presently in a, in an apartment, and once this house is, is constructed and finished and completed, he'll move into this as his permanent residence. So as you heard, and we appreciate Ms. Melissa's meeting with us yesterday and talking through the staff report, and, and there really is this front porch, this small front porch, which is the sole issue that we're asking for you to consider here. And the, the language out of, out of your guidelines relative to this question is, quote, "A historic character-defining feature should not be altered." And, and so the word should here, this is not a shall, we have a should, so you certainly have the discretion to consider the requests that we have in front of you. And this, as you heard, this particular porch that's on there now is not historic. It was added 20 to 25 years after the home was built around 1940. And so we have a nonhistoric porch that, that our client desires to alter and prefers to have a full-size porch that would come across the front of that facade. And as you heard, there's really two points of concern, that a larger porch is going to provide a false sense of, a false sense of history here, but of course, we already have a false sense of history. We've had that since the porch was installed to begin with. And then secondly, that the larger porch is going to change the style of the home. Our, our client, the property owner, wants to improve the style of the home, and frankly, we, we submit, his, his, his position is that that drawing on the right on your screen is a vast improvement over the current style of the home. And of course, we're talking about a nonhistoric feature. So we also think that the full porch is more compatible with the surrounding properties in the, in the surrounding area, more consistent with those and compatible with those. And if you have a chance to take a look at the aerial photo, which is on page two of your report, you'll see that this segment of Ninth Avenue South is a, is a single-loaded street with, with about a dozen, maybe 10 to 12 homes loaded on the east side of Ninth Avenue. So this segment of, of homes faces, faces the side yards or the side walls of the homes across the street, which are located on the west side. So we have no situation here where we're trying to mirror the, the homes across the street. There's no porches directly across the street which to compare to or to compete with or to match. And we certainly have lots of big porches in the surrounding area. When you look at that aerial photo, many of those homes in that surrounding area have much, much larger porches than what we're talking about here. So we, we simply ask for you to approve, approve the staff report with the adjustment to condition number three, to allow the porch to be constructed as shown on this drawing in front of you, and we appreciate your courtesies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the commission, my name is John Rankin. 1709 Woodland Street here in Nashville. I want to make one final point to our presentation, and that is, if a porch wasn't historic on this home to begin with, and the recommendation is to allow a porch, a six-by-10 porch, I don't think that, that, that request is much different for six-by-29, meaning there's not, the delineation between this should be whether the porch should be there or not, but if, if it's appropriate to have a porch, we, we feel like having a usable porch versus one that maybe you could, if you look at the approved plan from 2020, maybe you could put an umbrella in the corner. The owner of this property has expressed a really, a deep desire to have a full porch that was usable, that was sitable, that establishes and, and, and allows the things and the connection between the sidewalk and the home that he, that he and historic neighborhoods have always provided, and that is one-on-one, person-to-person connection. Looking at this house as it sits currently, the two houses to the right, 2412 and 2414 have full-width porches. The house immediately to the left, 2408, is undergoing renovation, and it has a smaller porch. 2406 to its left and 2404 both have full-width porches. So it's not that this is going to be out of character, out of context. If you look at the 12 houses that Mr. Henry just spoke of, about six have full-length porches and about six have smaller porches. And so that's just how it's evolved in this little narrow segment that is really on the edge of the overlay. And so what we're asking for is a thought of hardship to not have a usable porch in a historic neighborhood, where if you walk the streets of Waverly Belmont, I'd say 90% of the homes have a full-width porch. And we, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you. Any questions you have, we're here to answer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Rankin, I do have a question. With the slide that's on the screen there, it shows what was approved in 2020 with this, this front door off-center, it looks like it's maybe three feet from the windows on the right as you look at it, and maybe six feet, you know, five to six feet from the windows on the left, and yet for the proposed, it looks like a purely symmetrical front door and windows. Can you tell me which one is right, or which, is that, are you changing, or?
The one on the left is more of a, it looks almost like a, a drawing. We, the one on the right, ours, we actually measured. So we're not proposing to alter the window and door openings on this facade.
So the one on the right's accurate to?
Correct. We're, no matter what, for the record, the window and door openings, we're not asking to alter. Correct. We're, no matter what, for the record, the window and door openings, we're not asking to alter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Discussion, commissioners?
Can I have a, can I ask Sean a question, please? Sean, who did you say, uh, and it could be in here and I just missed it, who'd you say is the owner of the property?
Ryan Holmgren, H-O-L-M-G-R-E-N.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was somebody I knew, and, and so I'd have to recuse myself, but I don't know him, so.
He's new to town.
Okay, great, thank you.
Who isn't?
I guess it's important to note that we take the front facades of contributing. Um, contributing structures, contributing houses very seriously, and we rarely allow any, any modifications to the front facades especially. I realize there's a porch that was added onto the house, but the Sambor maps indicate there was not a porch to begin with. I think staff offering, if you want to remove that porch, offering to replace it with another porch. Is a fairly gracious, I feel like, offering. And when you look at the other houses along the street that do have porches, porches, they are a completely different style of home. Scale of home, they're, they're different, a lot of those um are not contributing. So I'm, I guess I'm in favor of the staff recommendation if we were to even allow a porch to be added back on at all.
You know, we are bound by our charge to follow the Department of the Interior standards. And those Department of the Interior standards allow you to choose which period of history that you're, that you're maintaining and representing. And I think that, uh, yes, you might go back and remove that porch if you were taking it back to the original house, but uh. But I, but I, I do think it's appropriate to take the structure that's been in place for decades now and to, to allow the replication of that. I applaud the owners going back to the original materials on the house and, and removing the stonework, and I think that. Uh, what the staff has recommended i- is within the uh, charge that we have from the Department of the Interior. And, uh, inappropriate for, for this particular structure. Uh, it is a different structure than the other ones on the street, and uh. And, and I know that in all the conservation overlays that we've looked at for historic homes. Uh, you do not change the, the front appearance of the house for all the reasons that staff listed in their recommendation, so. So unless there are other comments with respect to twenty-four, ten Ninth Avenue South, uh, I recommend uh. Approval with uh, with the staff recommendations.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, there's a second. I do have a question before we make that vote, just to be clear, and I know, um, going through the recommendation. So the proposed picture looks like it has, and I know I'm just being double sure, it looks like it's brick. But you're going to replace it with siding, correct? Or make sure that?
The, um, one of the conditions in the staff recommendations is that it be, that we inspect what's underneath and that if there's original siding there, it be retained. And if not, replaced with an appropriate siding with a maximum reveal of seven inches, so that's. If you're voting with the staff recommendation, that's part of the staff recommendation.
Not brick.
Not brick.
I know that we have gotten caught ourselves in, in, in a point where we said this, but it had on a, on a plan that it was brick and. It was, and it shouldn't have been brick, and that's how it was put.
Right, so staff won't issue the permit until we get revised, revised drawings.
Okay, just, just.
So it's, yeah, it's number. I think it's maybe, it's like numbers four, four through six. Your condition, yes.
Thank you. First in the, in a motion and a second, and all in favor of the motion? Okay, any opposed? None opposed, and that passes. Thank you, applicant.
The next one is fourteen seventeen Calvin Avenue. The application is to construct a rear addition that extends taller than the historic house. The project also includes an outbuilding that is a detached accessory dwelling unit. The house at fourteen seventeen Calvin is a contrib- a contributing nineteen forty side gabled home. In the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Um, it contributes to the overlay because of its age and architectural character. The addition is located at the rear of the historic house as required by the design guidelines, and it meets all the setbacks. The addition is no wider than the historic house, however, it does extend two feet taller than the historic house with a ridge raise. Staff finds this taller extension to meet the design guidelines. The addition's eve heights exceed the eve heights of the historic building. Therefore, they do not meet section, uh, six B eight of the design guidelines. In order to achieve compatibility of mass and scale, staff recommends either that the eve heights of the side gabled portion of the addition be brought down to align with the eaves. Of the side gable of the historic house on both sides of the addition, as indicated here by the dashed red lines. Or that the side gabled portion of the addition step in two feet on both sides, so that every location with taller eve. Uh, with taller eve heights is inset from the historic house, as indicated in this slide by the dashed red lines. There is also a connector portion of the addition with eve heights that are taller than the eaves of the historic house. However, staff finds these eve heights acceptable as they are fully inset behind the historic house, thus minimizing their visibility. With the condition that the eve heights of the addition's side gables match those of the historic house or step in two feet. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets section six B two through eleven for scale. Staff finds that the addition meets the design guidelines for siding, setbacks, location, massing, parking and driveways in proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff finds that the known materials of the project meet the design guidelines, but additional information is needed on other selections. With staff review of these final material selections, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines for materials. The footprint of the outbuilding is approximately seven hundred and seventeen square feet, thereby not exceeding the seven hundred and fifty square feet maximum. Established by the guidelines for lots that are less than ten thousand square feet. The proposed outbuilding is one and one-half stories, which does not exceed the number of stories of the historic building. And the ridge height is eighteen feet, six inches from the tallest point of existing grade, which does not exceed the maximum rid- ridge height of twenty-five feet. Staff finds the outbuilding to meet all the guidelines for footprint and height, massing, and siding and setbacks. With the reduction of all hoods and awnings of the outbuilding to meet three, the three-feet maximum depth. Staff finds the outbuilding to also meet the guidelines for add-on features. Staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions. The eve heights of the side gabled portion of the addition be brought down to align with the eaves of the side gable of the historic house on both sides of the addition. Or that the side gable portion of the addition step in two feet on both sides of the addition. All hoods, awnings be reduced to meet the three-foot maximum depth. A partial demo and shoring plan be reviewed prior to permitting. Partial demolition be accomplished manually and not begin until a partial demo and shoring plan has been approved and the building has been shored. The location of utility meters and mechanicals shall be reviewed prior to an administrative sign-off on the building permit, if located anywhere forward of the midpoint of the house. And staff approval of all material selections for cladding, windows, doors, driveway materials prior to purchase and installation. Uh, with these conditions, staff finds the proposed addition and outbuilding meet the design guidelines for the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And I believe the applicant is here and would like to speak.
Thank you, Joseph.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Van Pon, twenty-nine twenty-nine Sidco Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. We have reviewed and worked with staff on this multiple times, and even though I do feel that architecturally, the. Requirement to lower the eaves by about two and a half feet to align with those of the existing house, resulting in a more steep roof pitch on the addition. Is not desirable. My client has instructed me that we are in agreement with that and will conform to these things. I appreciate your time and will answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you, applicant. They may have some questions. Open public hearing, close public hearing, and?
I have a question for the architect. Van, what did you do to not be placed last on the agenda tonight?
I'm awfully close, there's only one left now. This is becoming my time.
Wait, actually, Van, I do also have, sorry, this is also kind of a joke. What's a control room? Like an office?
Long story, musicians.
Got it, I just, I saw that on the.
Okay. Is there a motion? Because our applicant has been compliant, he will be compliant. Yeah, thank you.
So, since the applicant is in agreement with staff, or at least the owner is, um, the, uh. Madam Chair, I recommend that, that we go with staff recommendations for fourteen seventeen Calvin Avenue.
Thank you, commissioner. There's a motion, is there a second? Second, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None seen? The motion passes. Thank you again, and for your patience waiting this long.
Alright, I feel like we've entered the punchy phase of the hearing. I've just got a few more to get through. Next is thirty-five sixteen Richardson Avenue. This is a circa nineteen fifteen house that contributes to the Elmington Place Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. This is an application for the construction of a rear addition that is neither taller nor wider, but lacks the required insets. And proposes two-story eaves on the back of a one-and-a-half-story house. The proposed addition is no taller or wider than the historic house, however, the addition does not have the appropriate insets. On the south side, the addition will be constructed flush with the existing sidewall of the house on both the first and second floors. On the north side, the sidewall of the dormer addition is proposed to be flush with the historic sidewall. Staff recommends that the sidewalls be inset two feet from the historic sidewalls. Here's the second floor plan, which does appear to inset a little over a foot, though this does not show in the rear elevation. Also, on the left side, it steps back out, while a second-story addition should be two feet inset for the full depth. The proposed addition has eaves that are more than eighteen feet tall, while the eaves in the historic house are about nine feet tall. Making this a two-story addition onto a one-and-a-half-story house. Staff recommends that the applicant bring those eaves down to match the height of the historic eaves and utilize dormers for any second-story space. The applicant proposes to infill the rear of the south elevation, which is currently lapped siding, that was historically a little recessed porch that was at some point infilled. Um, so they'd like to replace that lap siding with matching brick. Staff finds that this could be appropriate since it's far to the back of the structure and is going to simply re-clad an existing enclosed area. The applicant proposes to remove a paired window on the right side near the rear corner. Staff finds this alteration to be inappropriate, because the removal of this opening will create a seventeen-foot span of blank wall with no opening. Which does not meet the historic proportion and rhythm of openings and also removes a historic feature. Staff finds that an alteration to this opening could be appropriate since it is located well beyond the midpoint on a side elevation. Staff recommends either shortening the existing windows and leaving a panel beneath, or converting the paired window into a single window. Or perhaps backpainting the glazing and wallboarding the interior. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed house with the following conditions. The addition shall be inset two feet, the eaves shall be lowered to match the eve height of the historic house. The window proposed for removal on the north side shall remain an opening, though it may be altered as approved by staff. HVAC location shall be approved and materials should be approved. And the applicant is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me first?
Thank you, Jenny.
Let me just also say, you did receive a letter of support that should be in your pocket.
Good evening, my name is Taylor Hinden. Thank you for your time, and uh, thanks Jenny for your time working with me on this. Uh, I am the applicant and the homeowner of thirty-five sixteen Richardson. Uh, my wife and I and our two kids moved there two years ago. Uh, we were attracted to this house and this neighborhood due in large part to its historic character and charm, so. I fully appreciate this process and respect what you all do to protect our neighborhoods, and we hope to stay here long-term and raise our family here. Uh, we tried to be very thoughtful regarding our house and neighborhood and this design. Uh, I'd like for the commission to consider granting variance on uh some of these issues just based on some uh site restrictions that we have at this location. I wanted to point out on the site plan, um, that there is a um, twenty-foot wide sewer easement that runs perpendicular through the backyard. Which restricts us from going back much further than we currently are. Also, um, on the, uh, if you look at the rear elevation. Uh, you can see where that existing window is staying in, into the left. That, below that window is where the HVAC is currently, and we're going to keep it there. If we extended any further to the left into that, um, point, it would, it would inhibit where the HVAC is as well as that's where our driveway connects and comes back to a parking pad. And so we were trying to avoid a, a front parking situation or having to park on the street. And so we were hoping, uh, to, to get variance on keeping the uh, addition flush with that. Sidewall because we don't have room on the other side to go any further. As well as, as far as the addition height, um, for the eve height, the goal was to try to mimic, uh, and kind of, uh, pay homage to the. Existing large rear dormer, um, with the ridge cap. Uh, and the eve height is similar to that current eve height of that larger dormer and the pair of front dormers as well. Uh, you've seen those there. In your report, the staff finds that the rear-facing gable slope of four over twelve is appropriate as it is on the rear and not visually evident. I, I feel like I could also make the argument that if the slope is not evident, uh, that, uh, that, that the eve height is not very visually evident as, as well. Um, as it sits below the existing ridge line, uh, and the proximity and orientation of, of the adjacent homes. Make the entire rear addition minimally visible. As far as the rear, uh, side window infill, uh, that interior space is going to become a bathroom, and that window looks directly into my neighbor's back porch and their, their large kitchen window. Um, so, and being that it's on the back corner of the house that's angled away from the street view, we felt this could be appropriate and practical. Again, with the addition inset, um, and, and preserving, uh, the staff made a point about preserving the historic corner back where that corner porch used, is, used to be. We felt that that was a logical place to, uh, attach the addition since we're already going to be altering that, uh, and it's not. Currently, it's, a previous owner had walled that in with plywood and lumber, and it's not insulated, and. And we felt anything would be an upgrade, both architecturally and functionally. And, and then, um. The, the addition being an exte- different exterior cladding than the historic structure, we felt. Properly differentiated from the historic structure, which was the purpose of, of the inset requirement. Uh, and I know traditionally, like in the original Elmington Place overlay, when that was before the consolidation. There was some language of, you know, the inset is there to differentiate, and, and where, where you don't inset, it could be appropriate if it's different exterior cladding. And, and being that it's minimally visible from the street, uh, I wanted to show kind of street view there and how close it is to the neighbor's driveway. You almost have to be in the neighbor's driveway to even see where that's going to be. And, or fully across the street, which is, um, not technically in the overlay when you get across the street, um, it's an apartment complex. And then, uh. Jenny did point out that in the floor plan, the upstairs dormers are inset, and that's not, we realized yesterday with my, uh, drafts person. That, that that's not properly depicted on the, on the elevations that we, we gave to you, so we have fixed that, and I can provide that if, if you need it. And you can see on this elevation that it is, the line, uh, on the upstairs where the, uh, above the corner porch, that is where it bumps back out. To match the first-floor addition, uh, being flush with the exterior sidewall, but it is inset upstairs on both sides. I'd also wanted to point out that I, that I, my wife and I care about this neighborhood, we care about the history of this neighborhood. Uh, and we wanted to make sure we were doing something that wasn't, uh, in conflict with that and that was contextual, so. We did reach out to several of our neighbors, one of whom is, uh, Ira Chilton, who is an architect who. who is an architect who wrote many of the original overlay guidelines for our Elmington Place Overlay. And he was our overlay representative to, during the consolidation. And he was in support of this as well and felt that it was contextual. And being that it was minimally visible from the front, that he thought it would be a great addition to the neighborhood and did not conflict greatly with anything, that he didn't have any concerns about it. That, so I was just asked that you consider these things in your decision. Thanks. Any questions? I'm here.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Open public hearing. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
Well, I appreciate the argument the applicant made and understand, and looking at the the site plan, you know, a lot of times we do think about, you know, obviously, we take into consideration each site, each house, each parcel, and different restrictions that are there. My thoughts on this particular parcel and site is, yes, there is that sewer easement in the back. I don't think it, or it doesn't disallow for some sort of addition on the home, as we have seen. So I don't think there's, it's it's so, it's such an encumbrance that there's nothing else to be done. You know, there is room for an addition. There is room. I just personally don't think it's this addition to this home. And so I'm in full agreement with staff analysis on this one.
As I'm trying to make, I think I've made sense of of the addition and as it relates to the family room on the second floor. Think if you, as you complete, maybe speaking a little bit more to the site constraints, as you complete the volume of the house, it, they're pretty well maxing out the depth, excuse me, of what they, what they can build, kind of right to the edge of that easement without getting into something that they might be responsible to rebuild if it had to be, you know, torn down to dig up that six-inch, that truly is a six-inch sewer. Surely, it's not that deep. But nevertheless, that is an encumbrance, and as you said, we've taken that into account. One thing that I'm, I wasn't quite, or I'm not quite clear in the conditions of approval for the staff is how the, how the eaves would work and how, what then the applicant would be bound by to do dormers to sort of achieve what they're trying to do, given, and I ask that question in light of the sewer easement and rather than maximizing the width across the back of the house. I don't know, I'm having a hard time picturing the outcomes of what's suggested in the staff's recommendation.
Sure. They would not be bound to create dormers. But what we're asking is that they pull that eve height down to match the historic eve height. And they could then use dormers to, if they wanted to have second-story space. But we just want to see a one-and-a-half-story addition onto a one-and-a-half-story house. And you're right, it could go wider across the back. There's a lot of different ways they could go with it. I mean, I think it would require a bit of a redesign. And that could, in the end, be something that we might even be able to prove administratively if it met all the guidelines.
Underst-, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
That helps me. It does answer my question because I was like, how do you, at one of these design-as-we-go kind of things, or at least trying to understand, what is it that we're proposing, if not for a redesign, which is what it sounds like would need to happen? I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around what that would look like, and that's okay.
Yeah, I guess I agree with the recommendation of lowering the eve height. I'm wondering, just given the constraints of the site, with that easement and the, it seems like with the desire to keep a parking area, you know, would, I might feel comfortable just with those kind of hardships and constraints of maybe not requiring the first condition, if that helps them in some way. But I don't, I would want to hear from other people, too. I mean, I do think, I do think they have a, I mean, it's just a tight, it's a tight site. And the first condition was the addition being inset, and I know that we, we have, in the past, when there have been hardships, that's been one. We have, I can think of a couple of cases where we've allowed, allowed the building to not step in, but just a thought.
No, I appreciate that logic, Commissioner Fitz, in that if the eve does come down, you're starting to mash the second floor down, which wants it to grow bigger, wider. And the limitations of wider, well, if you're pushing out towards the drive and the HVAC unit, it's also getting narrower if it's a rectangular addition onto a rectangular house. It doesn't have to be that. I mean, it can bump in and then bump out. But completing that volume, we're adding limitations on other limitations that I tend, I'm swayed by your argument that condition number one, there perhaps could be some relief to that, to help the client with getting the roof and eve heights into compliance.
If there aren't any other comments, I can make a motion. With regards to 3516 Richardson Avenue, a move for approval of staff recommendations, with the exception of staff recommendation one, we'd strike that from the recommendations.
Is there a second to that motion? There is a second? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? I hear none, so that motion passes. Thank you, applicant, for your waiting.
The next project is 308 Broadway. This is a separate application from the violation that you looked at earlier today. The building located at 308 Broadway is a three-story circa 1890 Victorian brick commercial structure that contributes to the historic context of the Broadway Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. The proposed sign meets all guidelines but includes flashing lights, which must be approved by the commission as a modification. The applicant has requested to allow chasing lights on the Miranda portion. This type of lighting is allowed on Broadway, but not the rest of the district if approved by the commission as a modification, and if each flash does not last, does not last less than three seconds. With the condition that the timing of the flash on the lights be not less than three seconds, staff finds that the flashing lights can be appropriate. Also, given the active violations for this building, actually, I think that's not the case anymore. That's correct. Let me move on to the, to 308 Broadway. So staff is recommending approval with, that the timing of the flash on the light should not be less than three seconds, and that the sign shall be inspected prior to installation. And we are removing the second condition from that list.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Question for staff. I think I understand the logic. Or maybe this is a question for legal. I understand the logic behind removing that condition. Is there a legal reason why we, that condition couldn't be available to the commission?
Thank you. It's our position that each permit should be considered within sort of like the four corners of that application.
And not contingent upon?
And not make contingent upon another permit.
I know one commissioner and I did not hear what you said. Sorry.
It's our position at this time that the permits should be considered independently, and one not make contention on the other.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa, and...
Looks like the applicant is saying she's okay.
Okay. Okay. All right. I think that's more simplified, and...
Madam Chairman, with respect to 308 Broadway, I move for approval with the staff condition.
Okay, minus the number two. All right.
Second?
And there's a second? All in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? I hear none, and the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, Legal.
Okay, the next one is 2215 White Avenue. The application is to demolish a non-contributing duplex at 2215 White and construct infill. The duplex located at 2215 White Avenue was constructed in 1971. Given the later date of construction, as well as the style, form, and detailing of the house, which are inconsistent with the predominant surrounding historic character, staff finds that the house does not contribute to the historic character of the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. And its demolition meets its, and its demolition meets the design guidelines. Metro Historic Zoning Commission issued a permit for partial demolition of the duplex in August of 2021, following storm damage. The applicant now has come back and requests full demolition of the structure in order to build a new single-family infill on the lot. The proposed infill is oriented toward White Avenue, with a front setback that is consistent with the historic houses on the street. A proposed future garage is shown on the site plan, but plans for the garage were not submitted with this application, and so they're not part of this review. The infill is two-and-one-half stories with an overall height of 35 feet from grade and an overall width of 35 feet. Staff finds that the infill's height and width meet historic context, where houses range in height from 22 feet to 40 feet from grade, and range in width from 30 feet to 40 feet on lots that are all 50 feet wide, just as this lot at 2215 White Avenue. There is a two-and-a-half-story historic house immediately adjacent to 2215 White Avenue at 2217 White Avenue. That's up there in the top-left corner. And this house has a ridge height of 40 feet from grade. Staff finds the proposed infill meets all the guidelines for height and scale, setback and rhythm of spacing, form, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff finds that the known materials of the project meet the guidelines, but additional information is needed on other selections. With staff review of final material selections, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for materials. Staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Staff approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of windows and doors, the shingle and the metal roof color, porch materials, including porch floor and steps, and cladding material and dimensions, all before final purchase and installation. Paired and ribbons of multiple windows should have a four-to-six-inch mullion in between each window, and the location of utility meters and mechanicals shall be reviewed prior to an administrative sign-off on the building permit, if located anywhere forward of the midpoint of the house. With these conditions, staff finds the project meets Section 3B2 of the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines for New Construction and Section 5B2 of the Design Guidelines for Appropriate Demolition. The project does not meet Section 5B1 of the Design Guidelines for Inappropriate Demolition. I believe the applicant is here. If you have any questions, I don't...
Thank you, Joseph. Okay. Thank you, applicant. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Any questions, commissioners, or a motion?
With respect to 2215 White Avenue, move approval with the staff's recommendations.
Motion? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. The motion passes. Thank you. Applicant, thank you for waiting this long.
Okay, last one. 3612 Central Avenue is a circa 1918 frame-crasped bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Richland West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The applicant is proposing both a rear addition, the addition does extend wider, and a garage. The applicant first is proposing a new front dormer. The, even though this 1968 photo does not show a front dormer, there is framing evidence that a dormer once existed. The applicant did not provide the exact measurements of what this dormer is. And so one of the conditions is that we are requesting that they submit the exact dimension of that and that the new dormer be no wider than what is seen in the framing. The framing on the interior also does not provide evidence for how tall the dormer was historically, nor what its roof shape was. Staff finds that the new, the proposed new front dormer is taller than it would have been typically, especially since the windows on the ground floor are taller, are smaller than the windows in the dormer. And usually, it's the opposite. The windows on the ground floor are taller than the ones in the dormer. So staff is recommending that the dormer's height be reduced so that it is primarily glazing. The heights of the windows in the dormer are no taller than the heights of the windows on the ground floor, and that the dormer's ridge is at least two feet off of the ridge of the roof. There are some existing additions on the house, several built over many different reiterations of the house. So you can kind of see there's the main gable form and then a series of additions in the back. And some of those additions in the back have been there as long as the 1968 property assessor card. Here's a photo of the right elevation. You can see that bay, which I will mention in a second in the next slide. But you can kind of see the main gable form and then the lower one-story extensions. So here is the first-floor facade. Again, the addition is, much of what you see here, the footprint is existing. It looks very large, but much of it is existing. And the addition is going wider, which meets the design guidelines because the wide is, the lot is unusually wide. But there is that wider portion. There's a porch, and it's coming up right next to that bay. So we're asking that it be pushed back six feet off of that bay so that it extends wider. And we're not requiring inset at that point, again, because that footprint is existing and there's no inset, in sets currently. And here's just this, that side elevation. Again, if you're looking at the side elevation, the footprint of the house currently is about where the two main side gables are. And the footprint that's being added is behind the side gable. But the roof of the second side gable is being extended, so that's a new roof form. It's, was, is now a one-story, and it's becoming a one-and-a-half-story, if that makes sense. Again, similar situation on the left facade. Kind of where the porch starts is new footprints, but everything else, the footprint is there, and it's not currently inset, but they're adding the half-story. Staff does find that those dormers there are taller than what we find would be appropriate. So we're asking that their wall heights be no taller than six feet, and that they have a, maybe, you know, looking towards the other side, like a scale that's similar to the scale of the dormer of the other facade. This is, there's a lot of slope to this lot, and the slope allows for a basement-level garage at the back of the addition. Also, because of the slope of the lot, at the front of the garage, the front of the garage is like a one-story garage, and then on the back of the garage is a full two stories. Staff finds that, you know, we've approved similar-sized garages in similar situations. You know, what's happening is actually the, what, you're getting a basement-level garage off of the rear alley, and then upstairs is the conditioned space. Here are the garage elevations. They all meet the design guidelines. The only thing about the garage is that it has what looks to be a detached, or a dwelling unit in it with the living room and bedroom and full bath and full kitchen. And this lot is zoned for a single family where a dwelling unit is not allowed. So, you know, typically, we, that's something that codes would look at, not us. But it's, you know, we all often give the applicants a heads-up if we see something like this, which we did in this case, that we don't think this is going to get through codes. You should work with them. And so finally, staff is recommending approval with several conditions. The applicant, I spoke to the architect this morning, and they are in agreement with all of the proposed conditions. I can read through them if you want, but they're all on the screen at the instance of time, interest of time.
Question for staff, for staff, just clarity-wise. On item number four,
Yes.
We just say, the ridge of the dormer is at least two feet down-
We just say, the ridge of the dormer is at least two feet down from the roof ridge. Does that measure vertically or along the slope?
Vertically. So like, the peak of the dormer, assuming it's a gable, would be two feet below the ridge.
I would, just adding that into the condition, just so we're crystal on the biggie else.
Hello, my name is Eric Brazier, and I'm actually here as acting owners rep, my friend and and the owner. The applicant was out of town because this was originally on the consent, and then, I think, last minute, it was taken off. So we talked in depth this morning, and also with the architect, who was here but had to leave, just because the last-minute pop-up at the timing of the meeting. And I think that there was some concern about the the dado and the zoning portion. So we kind of looked at the entire situation and totally think that that we could easily change it to a pool house. That was a lot of the form and function of it anyhow with the pool bathroom, since it's on the same level as the as the pool itself. So so we've talked about removing the the range, all of the interior walls, except for a little storage closet area, and convert, basically taking the shower and converting it over into the bathroom, just adding a door there. So it'll literally just be a pool house. He has a young son that that it was, he was just going to utilize this as an extra as he as he gets older, probably just the time away that he gets to spend in the house, yet still close. So we thought that that was a great compromise, and all of the other conditions that were that were presented, we're already in motion to change those on the drawings and and go by all of them. So if you have any questions, I could answer.
Question for Legal. As far as the, what he described about converting the dado to a pool house, what jurisdiction do we have over any of that?
None. Usage is not within your purview. That's that's codes. Thanks.
So so that's not really our purview to to review that. I will say that Councilwoman Berkeley Allen sponsored and was able to pass a bill that allows for dadas to be located in RS zoning areas. It does require 30 adjacent homeowners to get together, but but that may be one avenue if if they do want to pursue the dado. It doesn't change the RS zoning, but it does allow for a dado in those areas.
Yes, thank you. We did know that, but just for for time, as as the essence, it wasn't anything to hold hold anything up. So we just wanted to to make sure that that was understood, and we'll comply with whatever direction's necessary.
Okay, so I kind of have a question on that. Since he's changing the plans, that would not be a dado, it would now be an outbuilding. Would we still have to review that? Would he have to come back? Is it just administratively? I'm not clear here.
The exterior dimensions, the materials, the height, the scale, everything that we review on the exterior, I don't think will be changing, from what I'm hearing. It's just the interior, which we don't review, so we would just consider an outbuilding, which we, but for, we, you know, when we're looking at an outbuilding or a dado, we're looking at the exterior the exact same. There's no difference, the way we do our, we apply the design guidelines.
All right.
Strictly speaking, nothing's going to change on the outside of this whole interior.
I think it just threw threw me off about being not a dado, and that's not our purview, and then now we've got an outbuilding. So, but, yeah. All right, so staff will definitely confirm that. Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm the guilty party. I pulled this out of the consent because one, a dado that I submitted has with a full kitchen, and it is functioned as a dado and with a single zoning. And of course, we do not, you know, take a look at the inside and just appearance and, you know, architecture and sub side to the main house and so forth. But sometimes, you know, human mistakes works, because we, if we sign off as a dado, and then codes department did not catch it, we inadvertently create illegal structure where it is not allowed. So that's why I just wanted to make sure we, as a government and entity, work in concert. So applicant, understand those dadas is not allowed unless it is UZO and unless it is dado overlay. And then it will be allowed, even though single-family zoning. And also, I want to make sure, if it's outside of our purview, but sometimes human error happened at the court department, we sign off, they think mistakenly issue the permit, and then we create illegal structure. So I'm trying to avoid those. So I do appreciate that.
Duly noted. I think that's clear now. I think duly noted. Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Do we have any other questions on this? Is it, all right, did I open public hearing? Not yet. Hello. Hello, public hearing? Close public hearing? It is. Just want to make sure I'm doing protocol, and so is there a motion?
So, Madam Chairman, with respect to 3612 Central Avenue, I move for approval with all staff conditions, and as part of the record, to notify the to the applicant that dadas are not approved in this area unless under special circumstances, and they'll need to pursue that otherwise beyond this word.
Duly noted. Is there a second? There's a second? Thank you, Commissioner, since you have pulled that one out, and thank you for clarifying. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? I hear none, so the motion passes. Thank you again. Appreciate the time. Yes. Robin, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it, all your work. And I like that shoring up.
Yeah, I like the new language in there.
Oh, yes. Vice Chair, you commented the the new format? The new the new format?
Well, the new conditions.
The shore up. Okay. I also like the new formatting as well, so far. Yeah. Any any other comment on the formatting?
I found it useful.
Yeah. I found it useful.
You know, just sections it out of your brain, you're not having to go, you know, this is what they say, oh, but what is that? Let me refer back, to refer back is right there.
Yeah. It's kind of easier for us, too, I think.
Right there, you're not having to, especially during presentations as well, they're kind of referencing other things, you can just, oh, it's right here. I've found myself a lot coming back.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Good job.
If IT is still around, yay, IT.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.